Okay, board, are you ready to start? All right, do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Bond? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to... For no further discipline for student A?
So moved.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion for no further discipline for student B?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Gittr, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton? Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to exempt... Application one from compulsory attendance due to religious exemption in Montgomery County Public Schools?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Parton and Dr. Gittr, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. And do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton? Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, next up, our student representatives tonight are Laura Altizer from Auburn High School and Olivia McNulty from Blacksburg High School. Will you please read our mission and belief statements?
MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences. One, all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Two, schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Three, every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Four, kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive community member. And five, the diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths.
Six, all people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Seven, every child deserves an advocate. Eight, honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Nine, open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Ten, learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. And eleven, relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Great, thank you both. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome... We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues to applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers we get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. Screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. And our first speaker tonight is John Cromer. Do we have a John Cromer tonight? All right. And that is the only person signed up, so with that, a public address is closed. Our next up are our consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. I do want to note, we have a grant from an anonymous donor for S and P debt in the amount of $1,000. Okay. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report for September?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Gittr? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gittr?
Yes.
Ms. Parton? Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And that quickly takes us into our business meeting. We'll start with our report from superintendent.
Good evening. During our last board meeting, I shared that we are still waiting on final accreditation and accountability results from the Virginia Department of Education. Last Thursday, the Department of Education shared that they have contracted with a third party to independently validate school performance and support framework accountability. The data and the outcomes for each school and division. So they believe that this added step promotes transparency and reinforces confidence and trust in the final framework outcomes. Once this independent validation is complete, the final division and school summary reports will be released to school divisions. So we plan to bring a presentation on our results to the board in November. Last Thursday was a teacher work day, and many teachers took advantage of that time to work on planning and grading, and others participated in some of the professional development that was offered. There were sessions offered for a multitude of things, from preschool literacy to science to world language sessions. I just wanted to emphasize how valuable that day was to our teachers. This Friday is report card day, and we have an excellent... We've had an excellent nine weeks, and as always, we want to encourage our parents to talk with teachers, work together as a team, and to ensure that students are making positive gains. Tonight, if you get home in time, turn on WDBJ seven to see some of our students in action. Today's students from Christiansburg High School attended the Montgomery County Teen First Responder Academy. Students got hands-on experience in putting out fires and seeing firefighters work. This experience highlighted the importance of first responders and helped showcase potential career paths for our students. And finally, this is National Principals Month. I would encourage everyone to take the time to let principals and assistant principals know how much they are appreciated. We have a strong group of leaders who work diligently to make sure that we have excellent schools, and we certainly want to take the time to celebrate them this month. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Board, any questions or comments? Okay, great. Then, next up, we'll get our superintendent's search update. Our special guests tonight, we have Dr. Kevin Kastner and Dr. Wayne Harris with BWP and Associates. They'll present an update to the board about the superintendent's search process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Graham. Dr. Kastner and I are pleased to be back before you and to present tonight the result of the community engagement... Which was held on October 8th and October 9th. I would begin by saying to you that there was outstanding response to the questions that we asked. You have in front of you now a hard copy of the entire report. This report includes all of the data that Dr. Kastner and I will share with you as a result of the two days of meetings that we held. Opportunities for all members of the community to speak with us, including a large number of students. The community engagement objectives include building community understanding and support of the superintendent's search. It's important to this community, and overall, it is one of the three parts of the triangle of success that will allow Montgomery County Public Schools students to be prepared for success. Second objective is to ensure the broadest possible community participation in the superintendent's search, and in fact, that was broad participation, which I'll share with you in just a moment. The community engagement data came from over 240 participants, including school board members, staff, students, parents, and the members of throughout this community. There were 30 stakeholder meetings and four public forums. One held... Each of the four high schools, Dr. Kastner was at Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School for the forum. I was present at Auburn High School and Eastern Montgomery. The superintendent's search survey involves 2519 responses in English from participants, including 1,400 students. And Dr. Kastner will talk to you about the responses, those prominent responses, and the consistency of what we heard, both from the survey. And I will talk about the responses from... On the qualitative side. There were three questions that we posed as we met in each of our meetings and the public forum. We met and we posed these three questions and recorded the responses, which are all included in the hard copy that you have in the appendices in the back. The first question. What are the strengths of Montgomery County schools? What are the things that are going well? What are those things that are promoting the success and well-being of students and demonstrating support for staff? Those things that we need to continue, strengths. Second question that we posed. What are the greatest challenges, issues, and concerns facing Montgomery County Public Schools? What are the challenges that the next superintendent will need to address in order to move forward into the future? And finally, the essence of what we were... Wanted to know is what are the qualities, experiences, characteristics, leadership attributes that the next superintendent needs to possess and demonstrate in order to demonstrate that they are the best match-in-fit to lead forward into the future? At this time, Dr. Kastner is going to come forward, and he will walk through with you the results of the survey. We'll also relate that to the meetings that we held, and I'll come back and talk specifically about the answers to the three questions. Strengths, challenges, qualities, characteristics, and experiences.
I'm a little challenged tonight in trying to read the report. My dog chose to take a few bites out of my glasses. Lovely little dog, but boy. So you can see the teeth marks in there. In any event, I want to create a context, because we're not just talking to the board here, we're talking to the public. As promised, there were two goals the board had. One was the fact that you wanted to have the opportunity for any members of your community to participate in giving feedback, even through the surveys, through the forums, or some of the individual 30 groups that we had with stakeholders. The second thing, you wanted to see transparency. What you have in this booklet is now public record. And as we're going to explain how this booklet is put together, this information will end up on your website. And if we've missed anything, or we've misrepresented anything, we would hope that members of your public would share that with you. Same thing with you as board members. Our intent is not for that to happen, but this is a process that we think is... Goes beyond just the opportunity that we had to be with your community for two days and having interviews with each of the board members. We would hope that the people that participated in this process will continue to talk with school board members up to the point when you start your interviews, which will be the first week of December. So we encourage that, and then at the same time, when you hire a superintendent, that these people will help them as they're getting into their entry into the community with the board and the superintendent together. When you look at the booklet itself, the way it's organized is you're going to find that there is quantitative data, which is the data from the surveys and the over 2,500 responses. And there's qualitative data that is in Appendix A. In this tape, for example, we interviewed seven board members. Comments from all seven board members are into strengths, are into challenges, are into qualities and characteristics. Same goes for the forum, same goes for the students, same goes for each of the stakeholder groups. That information, we then have used to triangulate with the qualitative data. And then at the same time, you're going to see the graphs of the English responses, and then we have separate student responses. And I'm going to share with you what the... What it looks like in comparison. We had 28 responses in Spanish. I did look at the Spanish results. I didn't run all of the pages on that because the data was somewhat consistent. So even though it was a smaller group, it was consistent. My Spanish isn't that great, but it was able to tell by looking at the bar graphs. So what I'd like to start with, if we could have the first slide. I think it's important... Well, first off, this is an all-time record for student responses. I tried to emphasize, we thought it was pretty important, and you guys took me to my word in the sense that when you have 1,400 student responses out of about 2,600, the question would be, did it skew the data? And I'm going to comment on that in a minute. The other thing that sometimes people wonder, is it going to get skewed by staff versus the community? Actually, the community had more responses than staff. So the information that is in the survey itself is a balance between the student, between internal and external. I think even if we would have had 5,000 responses, you probably would have still had about the same percentages, and it's pretty been consistent over the years that we've done this. So first off, a shout-out to the students that participated. I hope those sometimes read some of the data that's in the report for them, and that might be a good discussion. Also a good discussion, when a new superintendent comes in and starts meeting with student groups. You can then see the balance in here. Now, the other thing, we're giving you a Reader's Digest version. You're going to have the opportunity to look at this for the next few... Next month or so. So should your community. So there might be some other things that you'll see that will come up, because we can't cover all of it. Next slide, please. So let's start out by talking about the three most significant strengths. So when you looked at strengths, it's always a healthy thing to see you starting out with the highest in the qualities between your teachers and your staff. So you have that at 49%. And students had it at 44%. Then when you go to the second item, strengths, educational options, and programs. We're going to balance this with what we heard from the students, that they do feel there's a lot of choices that they have, and they appreciate that. Not just academic, but we're talking about career pathways and readiness skills. You also will note that there's supportive community. So when you look at that, now, I'm going to take you to a page in the book. Go to page six. Everybody on page six? Now... All of a sudden, teachers and staff, 49%. From the quantitative... From the qualitative data, when you go to Appendix A... All of a sudden, we see repeating highlights, and so when you notice excellent teachers and staff, you're going to see the consistent responses that we had. Accepting all students, excellent faculty, student relationships, strong leadership team. People care about the students. So then you see that balance. Then you go to educational options. You see a percentage, but what does the percentage mean? Engaging learning environment, variety of opportunities, emphasis on student learning, programs like dual enrollment, AP, robotics, CTE, regional, extracurricular, sports, many career pathways, emphasis on providing programs for all students. Then you go to supportive community. What were people saying? Strong support, strong partnerships, Virginia Tech, Radford, New River, ACE program. Collaboration with the business community. All that fits in. And then there's some that don't quite fit, so we have additional comments. Great students. Collective bargaining is working. Diverse community. Strong strategic plan. Good reputation. One of the most important ones, and we got this from each student group, students feel safe in your schools. So when you look at that, and you can think of also, people are going to be considering... and you can think of also, people are going to be considering to apply. When you see this type of strength, it certainly is a plus that people see a lot of great things that are already here in this district. Next slide, please. Well, I should have slipped to this one before, but give me, but you can see what I just, you can see the balance there, the percentages, and then you see the other on the strengths. Next slide, please. So let's see if I can get this one a little bit better. So now we're talking about the concerns. And the idea is, you want people to be able to feel comfortable saying what's on their mind. And frankly, I think they did. Next slide, please. So here's what we found out. And significantly, student mental health came out very high. And the students had it at fifty-five percent. Now, what does that mean? Certainly, because they feel safe in the schools, it just seems to be on their mind that they're concerned about all their, all their other students. I think it's a positive thing. But I also think, Dr. Graham, even as you have further conversations, you might ask, maybe what staff think about it, what your principals think about it? But because it's such a significant number, I'm not sure that we had as much information that we got from our meetings, but I, I think it's something you need to look at. Now, again, if we go to page seven, you can see when we have funding. So what do you talk about funding? What's the issue? Adequate competition, compensation to compete. When we did the operational staff, there's a lot of positions that aren't filled. And the reason, the competition out there is paying more, and so they have vacancies. And that's why a lot of your mechanics are driving buses. That wasn't the intention. But the issue is, and it's not new to this district, we hear this many places. You can see what they mean when they get into it. They talk about impact of federal and state funding. They talk about the importance of attracting and retaining teachers. They talked about the issue of, in some cases, split positions. They talk about loss of principals. So you see a number, thirty-five percent. Well, what were people talking about? So then we go to the appendices, and that's what we hear. Educational options and programs, you can see comes in at twenty-three. And at twenty-three, what people are talking about, they still would like to see more programs. They'd like to see more opportunities for career pathways. So they talk about CTE offerings. They talked about the issue of travel. In order for some students to participate in some of your higher academic programs, they're not offered in all of your schools, so people have to travel. Students think that takes away a period or day or so, so it's an issue. How do you solve it? Well, you could have the same programs in each school, but that doesn't necessarily work in each district. But you can see that that's something that at least was on their mind. When they talk about also needs of ESOL and, and also SPED. Now, in the other issues regarding the personnel, they talked about a divided board. Well, you know yourself. Sometimes you all get along, and sometimes you have differences of opinion. Are you unique? No. But we wanted people to feel that they could speak what they wanted. So it, it came up. The other thing that came up, and when you talk about, is it disparity? And you're aware of the report on the disparity in the discipline data. The fact that the audit report showed that. You're going to talk about the achievement gap. Some students are not doing as well academically as others. You're aware of that. But that's in there, and that's where it fit. You also about the issues of poverty. You talk about the issues and the difficulty. And Dr. Harris and I are very well aware of it. You have four different communities, and they're different. And one size doesn't fit all. And a lot of your discussions are figuring out how much each group gets the same, the piece of the pie. That's a discussion you're aware of, it can happen in facilities. And the one thing I want to mention, maintenance of facilities. You have an aging infrastructure in some of your schools. You have some great newer schools. But that infrastructure issue and the aging of it, it's going to be something that you're going to have to address depending upon if it gets into the equity issue. It's not like Columbus, Ohio, where fifty percent of the schools aren't air-conditioned. That's the facility issue. Same thing in Richmond at one time. So you don't have that severe, but the issue of whether you have leaky roofs or things like that, that's an issue. Other issue that came up is your Wi-Fi. There are certain areas of the county where students and their families don't have access to Wi-Fi. That's an equity issue. It's an issue that isn't just one for the school system, it's for the county government. That's why when you have this opportunity for people to give their say-in, you have to see, is there something here that we don't keep doing better at as it comes out? There's something else that I thought came up, and I think we have to balance this. And we didn't hear this often, but when we did hear it, we thought it was important, we at least made a statement. There's an understanding. It's the understanding that the DEI focus is not representative of some segments of your community. The example that came out is when you had board elections. And the board elections, some of the data was close. So again, this isn't different from other communities. But the fact that you do have different people that have different views, that's all part of a school system. It's all something that you as a board work with. But it's also something, as you're hiring a new superintendent, you want to know of their ability to bring diverse groups together and trying to do the best they can with the consensus of the board and the community. Overall, I don't think any of the challenges aren't things that are different in this community than others. But at least now, they're documented, and you can see some of them. You're probably pretty much already aware of them. Now, the remaining areas that we want to talk about have to do more with the qualities and characteristics you'd like to see in the next superintendent. So when you look at the important leadership skills, and you're going to look at that green bar, look at that, seventy-two percent, they talk about communication. Now, when you look in on page ten and page, I guess, page nine and ten, you'll see what came out of the quantitative part when they talk about student focus. Courage to put students first, visible and involved with all students. So you see a number, and then you talk about good judgment, and you talk about commitment to the community. Time and again, it came up that people are looking for someone that's going to have roots in the ground and a staying power, and would like to see people stay longer than we have recently seen the trend here in the school system. You already know that. And you're going to work pretty hard. I don't know if you can, how many promises you can get from whoever you're going to select, but that's really important to the community, and it's also important to your district because any do-over every two or three years is not in the best interest of anyone. As long as someone's doing a good job. So when you look at that, and you can see the issue of dealing with the communication, you can see good judgment, community engagement. Next slide, please. This is awful busy, so let me translate it with the next slide. Okay, when he asks the question, what do you want to see that's important? Or extremely important? Experience in strategic planning, ninety-eight percent of the people. Now, we're talking students, adults, parents, whatever. Experience in instruction. I would have to say overwhelmingly, there's support that they'd like to see whoever it is you choose as a superintendent has been a classroom teacher. That's the type of credibility that a lot of districts think is important. You're not looking for someone that's an MBA from Harvard. You're looking someone that has boots on the ground, experience in the classrooms and in central office. Experienced as a superintendent, that's qualified with a track record of success. You're looking about experience in personnel, dealing with issues of attracting and retaining, and even try to work with the diversity you'd like to see in your student, or teacher population mirroring what you have in your community. Experienced in a multicultural environment. So this pretty much validates a lot of who you are. When you talk about, they think this is important. Was a doctorate important? Not so much. So maybe they said eighty-five percent wanted a doctorate. So that wasn't the one that they wanted to differentiate. You can say you might prefer that, but it doesn't seem that that's a qualifier that would exclude somebody. Next slide, please. When you take this information, and you're going to have an opportunity to look through the balance of the quantitative and the qualitative. We used this pattern to figure out how we could generate a data-driven leadership profile. And I'd like to turn this back over to Wayne, and he can go through what we came up with.
All of the information that we gathered is what we heard from those who participated and shared responses to the three questions. We wanted to be certain that we captured the essence of each person's response. And when we finished each session, whether it was an interview, or a group meeting, or a forum, we read back to the folks who had shared with us what they had said. So this is accurate information that we gleaned from the community because the ultimate goal was to be able to determine what are the qualities, characteristics, skills, knowledge, leadership attributes that we need to look for as we are screening the applicant pool in order to bring to you four to six candidates that are the best match-and-fit. That is the reason for creating the leadership profile. And you will see on the screen there that the foundation for that is what I just said. The one-on-one interviews with the board members, the focus groups that included a critical mass of individuals from across the community, and the online survey. You have a hard copy, a separate copy at the back of the community engagement report of the profile that will be a little easier for you. If you look on your laptop, there's a statement that I'm going to read that's the overview, the profile overview. And the beginnings of this profile come directly from the vacancy announcement, which is critical because already we've had, as of this afternoon, twelve people begin an application or complete an application, and that does not include the other calls that we have had. And all of them have asked about the leadership profile. In fact, we were contacted this afternoon, and the first thing the individual said to us is, I need to know about the, what they're looking for so that I can determine if I'm a good match-and-fit. So that's pretty standard as we are looking at candidates. The Montgomery County School Board seeks an innovative, deeply committed superintendent to lead our high-performing district in Christiansburg, Virginia. The ideal candidate will be an experienced educator with a proven history of fostering a positive organizational, cultural, building, enduring relationships in a diverse community, and increasing academic success. And then there are five bullets that describe the qualifications that are included. And I won't read all of those to you, you can see that, because that then leads to the beginnings of the four categories of attributes that we will be looking for in candidates to determine fit and match. And those four categories in the leadership prof, profile, those four areas are visionary instructional leader, effective communicator, collaborative manager, and then personal qualities. Think about what you heard Dr. Kastner share with you that's included in the booklet. And it's from all of that information that we then listed and described what each of these four categories mean and what we will be looking for for fit and match. Under instructional, visionary instructional leader, the individual must have demonstrated forward-thinking, that they're progressive. They have a solid understanding of teaching and learning. They will initiate and support multifaceted educational programs that prepare each student for post-secondary and career readiness. Do you see that that particular statement is reflected in what we heard over the two-day community engagement? Demonstrate experience implementing initiatives that expand opportunities to meet the needs of all students, including special education, English language learners, and closing the achievement gap. Again, the repetitiveness, you heard Dr. Kastner refer to these comments, and we heard them multiple times, which is why the next superintendent who matches and fits will have to demonstrate expertise in these areas. And finally, an instructional leader who exhibits an understanding of educating a diverse student population that embraces diversity, inclusivity, and equity to ensure the academic success of all students. Second, collaborative manager. Let me spare you having me read all of that, and I'll give you a chance to look at it, and I'll highlight the key points there. Forward-thinking leader, strong decision-making skills. Implement strategic, operational, and fiscal decisions, funding, money. Improve educational outcomes. Someone who is politically savvy. Experience in the politics of equity and skills to build relationships with the school board, board of supervisors, employees, and the entire community. And finally, and you saw this one was at the top of the list, someone who is adept and successful with strategic planning. Effective communicator. You saw that at the top of the list. Communication. Consensus builder, visible, engaged, not only in the schools but in the community. We heard invested, approachable. Someone who will be out and about. I think we even heard boots on the ground. That's a song, I like that song. Someone who will really work with multiple individuals throughout the community and can be effective working with diverse points of view. Practice active listening, and that's what Dr. Kastner and I did as we listened in all of the sessions that we had. Transparency, open communication. Again, open, approachable communicator who works cooperatively with the groups that I've already mentioned, the school board, the board of supervisors, individuals in the community, students, staff. In other words, communicate, build relations, create trust, work together in a team effort for the benefit of students and the support of staff. And finally, personal qualities. the benefit of students and the support of staff. And finally, personal qualities. You see the repetitiveness? Visibility, part of the community, understanding the history, the diversity within the community, the culture and the values. Someone who desires to serve as a unifying force, to inspire others, to be an example, to demonstrate integrity, fairness, equity, who will serve the public and support public education. And finally, carriage. Carriage is at the heart of being successful, to act in the best interest of all students, even given opposition and conflict. Someone who will consistently make students the top priority. These are the four categories in the leadership profile that we will use as we are screening the applicant pool to determine match and fit in order to bring before you four to six candidates, from which you will determine who you will interview, and ultimately who you will select to be your next superintendent. So with that, let me have Dr. Kastner come back, and we'll be available to answer any questions or clarify anything.
First, Tash. I noticed a typo or two on the PowerPoint. Before you posted on your website, can you clean that up for us? That's my bad. These glasses. We're getting to a point that the specifications, or what we're looking for to lead to a leadership profile, we have it together for you. This leadership profile that you have is a draft. We'd like you, as a board, to work with your board chair, that if you desire any edits, that you reach some consensus, and we'd like to have it back within a week. You don't have to take a vote on it or anything, but you do need to make sure that there's anything that you can improve upon, and we definitely expect that. But I will tell you, you can see the consistency on everything we were talking about. You see it in there. Even to that first part, when you're talking about longevity, all that fits, the diversity, it fits, and you can see how that works. As you're concluding the specifications with the acceptance of the leadership profile, the deadline for application is a month away, November twenty-second. We intend to come with you. Now, this is where, at a tough time of year, scheduling is critical, because we think it's critical to have all board members involved in the interview process. And the first week, I think in the week of November thirtieth, we're going to need about three hours. And we're going to do board training for interviews, and we're going to present candidates for you to consider to interview. The following week will be your first round of interviews. The week after would be your second round. I'd like to try to backward map that we get this where the board is in a position to make a decision and begin negotiations by December fifteenth. There's a little play in that, but in a busy time of year, we need to plan ahead on that, and if you will work with the board chair and Tash to see about setting some of those firm dates. Now, you need to understand, we are not involved in the interviews. It's the board, and everything is confidential until you make that announcement. But we would hope, again, as I mentioned earlier, that community members would still continue to share their thoughts in what they're looking for, to work with you in finding the best superintendent we can find. So when you look at that, the whole issue is negotiation. Now we'll be able to have all that done by the end of December, if not, beginning of January, so you can get somebody then to negotiate the transition, so we can have someone on board as soon as possible. February's the goal. If someone is not a sitting superintendent, that's very doable. If someone is a superintendent, it's going to be a negotiation. But it is something I think you can, we want someone involved while you're still in the budget This concludes our report, and as we mentioned, we want anybody that might take exception if we miss something to share that with you. And I, but I do think, because of the work we've had with staff and getting us out there with the right people, and the people that came to all of our meetings, we really enjoyed the experience, and I think we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish to support you. So this concludes our report.
Great. Thank you both. I want to be the first to say thank you so much for all the hard work you put into this, all the, all the feedback you collected in a short amount of time, and turned this around to us in time for tonight's meeting. Very great presentation, and a lot of good stuff in here. Let's open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Who wants to start?
Mr. Chairman, I did note when we were sharing, Dr. Kastner was sharing about the courses and the students' response about problems with travel time from one school to the other. I'll tell you that I saw smiles and nodding from the two student board members, which acknowledges that what we heard is something that the next superintendent will need to address with the board.
Sure. I'll get the students' inputs into this too here as we go around.
Thank you, gentlemen, as well, for the report. So the slides that you prepared this evening will go into board docs after it gets cleaned up. They'll be available to the community, because there are a couple of the, like on slide thirteen, I don't see that in the report, so I was trying to, to compare the two. Is there information, is that the, what I'm seeing on slide thirteen is just represented in a different form in the full report? Because I can't, it's, it's small, so I can't read the text.
No, it's consistent.
Okay.
It's consistent. Because a couple of these things were more in additional comments, they didn't come into percentages, but they seem to be representative of what we heard in that area.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, so I'm looking at the draft leadership profile, and a couple things stow to me. One is that the first thing you mentioned is, oh, the candidate desires and tends to serve the school districts and the community for an extended tenure. I don't disagree with the benefit of that, but when I look at the, the information that you just presented, it didn't seem like that was the number one item that people are really looking for.
We did not intend to prioritize. However, if the board wants to make emphasis by prioritizing, that's your call. But it was something that was there, and it just came up over and over again. So we expect at this point for it to represent how you want it represented, so don't, feel free. But I don't want it to stand out that some of the other things aren't important, too.
Right. I just, I'm, I'm just trying to follow, because we're getting a lot of information right here, right in the meeting.
Lots to process.
Yeah, a lot to process. So a couple of other things. So I, you know, funding and personnel, when the slide that you just had up are really important. You talked about aging infrastructure. So one of the other questions I have, because ultimately, this leadership profile is really critical, because this is what superintendents want, and, and how are they, how they're making decisions. So how, how would I know if I'm a super, if I'm considering MCPS?
So today...
That these, so that the, like, these particular issues of, of pay, personnel, infrastructure, like, I need to have experience in those areas.
So today, we received an email from a person who was really inquiring about when will the profile be there.
Yeah.
That individual, I spoke with him, and they said, "After I see the profile, I'll that, if I have some questions, can I call?" And I said, "Absolutely."
Yeah.
So the individuals will then have to do their own checking to determine, do they match and fit? We will be doing checking with outsources and having interviews with the candidate to determine, do they have a successful experience addressing these challenges?
Mm-hmm.
And that's how we determine match and fit.
Okay. Great, because I can see in the bullet points for different areas how they map on, but there's also significant input that you got that I don't necessarily see in the profile. And so I know that we're going to provide some input, but I'm just thinking, I mean, there are some significant areas that were identified in the community forums and the surveys that I don't necessarily see in the profile.
Well, we couldn't put it all in the profile. That's why we put it in categories.
Yeah.
But we gave you the feedback that we received from each meeting, so that you can see it's there.
Yeah.
We know where it's there.
Yeah.
So as we are questioning and interviewing with the candidates, we will be trying to determine, do they have success? Have they had experience dealing with these kinds of issues? And that's what allows us to know if they're good fit and match.
Let me, let me give you a context. When you look at everything in that profile, you got to be able to climb tall buildings.
Right.
And what we're looking for is at least an eighty percent match and fit. Somebody might not be able to do all of this, but you're still going to be looking for an overwhelming number. And some of you that have been through other superintendent searches and everything, you at least use that profile pretty much as a benchmark for you. And as you improve upon it, if there's something there that doesn't emphasize something, that's so be it. But we're never, you're never, you want somebody to can do all those things, but somewhere you're going to have to look where their strengths are in relationship to what you think their strengths should be for who you want. That, that's that issue of who's going to separate to be the match for you.
Okay. Thank you. Other board members to weigh in here.
We'll go around. Ms. Parton?
Thank you both. It's a lot of work, a lot of time, and I did want to say, Dr. Harris, thank you for your time for speaking with me. Probably kept you on the phone longer than what you wanted, but it was, it was a pleasure. It was, it was a pleasure speaking with you. And from that, I gathered that you all were very, you know, explicit about what you were looking for, and you read back to me everything. So it sounds like you all were very, took your time and, you know, went through everything with a fine-tooth comb. So I know that's time-consuming, too. So thank you for that. I was very, I don't want to say surprised, but I was surprised to see the, the student turnout. It was fantastic. I'm glad to see that, that whatever initiative was used to get them to fill out this survey, they, they filled it out. And actually, from, you know, the community and the, and the teachers and the staff and everyone, looks like you all were provided a lot of good feedback. I did, was curious about one thing. I wasn't able to make any of the, of the forums, and I believe, I think, Dr. Harris, you said you were at Eastern Montgomery and Auburn?
Auburn on the eighth.
Okay.
And Eastern Montgomery on the night.
And then, Dr. Kastner, I'm assuming you were at CHS and BHS? Okay. I don't know if you all have collaborated much on how those forums were as far as, I'm just curious about the, the turnout by the community at, at the forums.
We have the numbers. I think the aggregate was around thirty-five. It was not a huge amount, but sometimes, even if you have five or six people, they're going to get in and give you the pretty good representation.
Absolutely.
So it isn't always quantity.
Right.
But the meetings were pretty engaging. You had two board members that attended two of the sessions, so they can speak from their experiences.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to thank you, because I know the forums were time-consuming for you all as well, and I know collectively as a board, we wanted to make sure we gave opportunities at different times for all community members, no matter what, if it was a teacher, if it was a parent, or whatever, to be able to come and speak. So thank you all for that and all of your hard work.
There were two major events each night. I think it's purple volleyball, pink.
Oh, okay.
At both schools where I were.
Yes, sir.
So many of the parents and community members were participating.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Wong?
Dr. Harris, I do appreciate our conversation as well. I know you caught me out of breath coming from tech game, but I appreciate you take time to, to have that conversation when we were able to get in. And I do apologize also for not being able to be there. I didn't have a dog get a hold of my glasses, but my eye looked like a dog got a hold of me, even though they didn't. So I kind of stayed low till that passed. I agree. I look at this as a place to start, and that's why we have you all to guide us and to lead us. And I definitely appreciate your, your professionalism and your leadership and the, somebody's needing something. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. I thought something's not right getting here. But I, I know you guys will find us someone wonderful. The comments did not shock me. I knew that's exactly what people were going to be saying. I do as well hear about longevity. It may not have been on the top, but that's what I hear everywhere I go. We want to see somebody who wants to stay. And I personally look at that as we need to make them want to stay. So, you know, once we find that, that person that fits what we're looking for, we've got a job to do as well. So we appreciate everything that you've done at this point, I do, and I know you're going to find us somebody great. Thank you.
Ms. Prusso?
I'll just echo what my board members have also shared, and thanking you for all this hard work. Data collection is not an easy task, and you turned it around so quickly. So thank you for, for doing that for us. I was curious, just given your, your expertise in these kinds of searches, what do you see maybe that was surprising from the survey results that may, that just makes us different from other districts?
I, I thought that the student mental health was a statement that was consistent between your community and also your students. However, we didn't hear a lot of responses to describe what that means. I think it's something you need to look at. We also heard, though, your students feel safe. So we're not, and, and to me, that, that's pretty important. But I think that was a little bit of a surprise. But the whole issue that everybody recognizes, that you have a diverse community, you have diverse needs, and they're very clear, one-size-fits-all is not the approach that's going to work here. So a lot of that was pretty consistent, and with the time I spent here, there really weren't any real surprises, so to speak. But I thought the reception in itself of all the people that came out and those that participate is going to help create some momentum. And that's one of the things that you want this process to do. So the idea is capture momentum, hire a great person, and then get on. So it's working the way it's supposed to so far. But again, you're the one that's going to pick the superintendent. We will give you some recommendations of those that hit the match and fit, and that's why people need to keep talking with you.
Thank you.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes. Thank you for putting all this data together. Just a couple items. Will you send us a leadership profile in an editable format?
In a what?
Editable format? Word document?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Tash has it.
She already has it.
She has it already? Okay. Yeah, I think that's actually everything. I had a couple edits on there, but I'll make those and send them to you all.
Ms. Franklin, the board.
Tash, if you could email the board members in Word. Tosh, if you could email the board members in Word.
So that we could have, so that we could have gone over.
Ms. Franklin, I want to explain why we don't do that.
Every time.
If we, if we would have given it to you ahead of time, it would have become public record, and you would have, people in the community would see it before you. So, that's the downside of that happening. And if all of a sudden, someone comes up and, and they've read it because they had more time than board members, we didn't want things to get ahead of you seeing it first. So, it's a trade-off, but that was the reason. And now the fact, you're going to have it in the next month or two as you're getting into it. And you need to take your time in getting to the profile. But I, I do understand that normally board members use, are used to getting things ahead of time. And that was a compromise we made.
Okay. So, I would have liked to have a vote into whether we would have rather been compromised that way or have the information. Part of the transparency is everybody's going to see it anyway. It's a lot of information to, to digest and to be able to go over this profile. And you wanted it, it's not back on the screen, wanted us to give you a decision on this by, I think you said Friday?
As quickly as possible.
We're flexible.
So that it can be posted, but we're not saying we have to have it yesterday. But if you all will review it, make whatever adjustments, and then have it sent so that it can be posted, because it then gives the applicants an opportunity to, as they are filling out their application. So, if, if you need more than a day or two, that's fine, but as long as we can get it as quickly as possible.
If, if it's reasonable, next week sometime?
So, I'm not sure what that process is going to look like. Then, then everybody submits stuff, then it comes back to review to the board? How's that process going to work?
Yeah, I'd say that's something that we should figure out. I will say, just based on, on, on the fact that we're going to have some more student discipline things to deal with in the next week, I see a special session on our calendar coming up anyway. So, I might recommend, let's, you know, I get Tosh's help in figuring out availability of the board. We'll get that scheduled. And then, let's spend the time between now and then reviewing all the stuff. And everybody come to that meeting with your thoughts, and let's discuss together before we start shooting emails all over the place. And then kind of have a little more unified message would be my recommendation, but that's up to the board in terms of how you want to do it. We'll see if the students have any, any comments that they would like to share as a part of this discussion.
One thing I'm kind of curious about is with the challenges, issues, concerns. Do you have like access to the distribution of like student, like if students said, like which challenge they listed, or if parents did it especially? I'm really curious about like the educational opportunities and programs one, and seeing like if that was something acknowledged by students? Because like as a student from Auburn, I find that really important in the community. Also, if you have like access to like which region that person came from and who said that, you know?
Well, we, we didn't separate it by schools. But now that you have that information, perhaps among your other students, if you see something was missed, or even if you have a student government group, have them review it, and maybe even to the point of testify for the board, they'd like to add some more details. But that, that's a good part of the process that you can consider.
So, for me, when you said that the report on student mental health was, you know, overall good, and you said you weren't quite sure like what factors are involved with. So, I've moved around in a lot of different counties, and I'd say Blacksburg, not just Blacksburg, but Montgomery County overall has been, you know, the best because there are many supportive teachers. I've met throughout all the different schools and, you know, we have excellent teachers that take time with their day. You know, even if they have children at home or children that play sports, they stay after school to help students, you know, with their grades, with extra tutoring. There's so many opportunities, you know, to join like the National Honor Society or to get tutoring from them. And I feel like grades is a huge stressor on mental health. Another thing is, not sure if the other school do this, but I know Blacksburg has like, you're allowed to two mental health days per quarter just to help you relax, rewind, and reset. And just say overall, Montgomery County is a very encouraging place, so I'm very thankful for it. So, but one of the things I am concerned about is Blacksburg is a more competitive school, and there's many students that come from like the different schools, such as maybe Auburn or Christiansburg or, oh, sorry. From the different schools that come to Blacksburg. For example, like the cosmetology program we have, Blacksburg has an amazing cosmetology program, but students are having to wait on the bus to go to school. And you know, it's taking forty-five minutes to an hour that they're missing of school time having to travel. So, that's very concerning, like during Bruin Block through, I'm not sure if the schedule's the same for all Montgomery County, but for Bruin Block, like for us, like I have Ms. Steiner, my cosmetology teacher, and there would be a huge group of students, you know, waiting in the lounge, waiting for their bus so they can go back to school. And they're waiting, they've been waiting there all throughout lunch, throughout Bruin Block, and into fourth quarter. So, I'm not really sure how, like, if you have any plans on how to fix that? Like, I understand that you cannot have like all of the same exact programs across all four schools because they're not, may not be like qualified teachers or just not enough student interest. But I was just wondering like if you had anything planned for that?
What, what you have just shared, we heard over and over again, and it was part of the report that Dr. Kastner shared, that that's a major concern about travel time, loss of time. And it was not only students who shared that, we heard it from members of the community as well. So, that is in the report. So, as we are looking at candidates, we will be trying to determine, how have they addressed issues that impact students? That will help us determine, is this candidate, is that one of the things that they do and will be able to do if they are selected by the board?
All right, great. Board, let's go around one more time, if you don't mind. If you have any other questions or comments, certainly. But, but also, let's, let's weigh in on what we want our next steps to be. So, do we want to find a time to meet and discuss this and provide unified comments? Do we want to provide individual comments? Or do we want to do something else? Just kind of giving your thoughts on that, so we know what we're doing.
Okay. I should have said at the beginning, but I, I am really grateful for the community's input. I was at the one listening session at BHS and thought it was wonderful. It was really great feedback from the community, and I am also excited by the number of students who responded to the survey. I should have said that. As far as next steps, I mean, I, I, I agree with Ms. Franklin. It would have been nice to, to have gotten this before the meeting so that we could have, and I understand, I mean, this would have been public anyway. And, and, and so, having given us a report before today would, I think would have been possible. But I think one of the things that we did discuss is mapping the schedule for the search onto our school board meetings. That was my recollection of one of the things that I was curious about. Am I remembering this correctly? Because we have a basic framework for the search. And so, people are looking at like, maybe, maybe that's my memory. But it seems like, other than approving this, we're not really going to be doing anything until December? Is that correct? So, it might not be necessary at this point?
I was sharing with Dr. Kastner, as you talked about kind of mapping the rest of the process with your schedule, because he indicated that we would need upwards of two to three hours to come back and present the candidates. You have a board meeting scheduled for the second of November. You all decided we could come prior to that board meeting. If you wanted to call a special meeting a couple hours before the second, then it could be done then, and you wouldn't have to schedule a separate meeting.
Second of December, right?
Yeah, that's my, I mean, that's my strong suggestion, is if we know that there's going to be different markers in this process, that we, as much as possible align them with our school, our scheduled school board meetings, so that we minimize the need for special meetings.
And that's possible from our perspective. We would be available to do that.
Yeah, okay, great. As far as this profile, one way to do it is by sharing a Word document. We comment and we report back to you. Another way is, is to do a, a Google Doc that we all have access to. And that way, we could see each other's comments in real time. And, and then decide, I don't know if we need a separate, a special meeting to come to a consensus on the profile. That's my initial thought on that.
Okay. Ms. Spartan?
So, I'm actually, I'm okay with getting this tonight. I understand your reasoning behind it. I wouldn't have been able to read it all before the meeting, but you have basically outlined what has been in this book, and then we can go back and read the further comments and, and all of that. And I do know it's time-consuming to get ready. And it is, it is available now for public to read, so I'm good with that. As far as the meeting, I'm, I'm good with sharing information in a Google Doc. But seeing as how our board has always tended to lean, I think there's probably going to want to be a discussion among the board about this possibly, and I could be wrong, before we make a final decision. Now, whether that be sending you, Chair Hudson, a, what are your top decisions on it? And you getting an email from all of us, and then you, you doing that, combining that and saying this is okay, or whether we meet to discuss it, whatever the will of the board is. I'm fine with, with what the majority of the board would like to do on that.
Okay. Ms. Bond?
I actually pretty much agree with everything Ms. Spartan said right there. So, whatever, whatever the board decides to do, I'm, I'm easy to, to move along with.
Ms. Russell?
If we can reach consensus offline with, with edits before a special meeting, but I'm also, given that we will likely be meeting next week and kind of fall within the, the timeline that the, that BWP has asked of us, I agree with Ms. Parton, that we might just want to make sure together that we have reached consensus.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so, thanks to all the community. And one thing to, to highlight for our teachers and our students, the students of MCPS list that they have great support from teachers and great teachers. And our staff say that they have great students. So, it's nice that the, that it's reciprocal. I think the Google Doc option is a great option. I think you, you may know the answer. For FOIA purposes, we can edit it, but as, if we're all participating in it, then it has to be publicly available while we're editing it.
Only if there's a request. If there's a request, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a permanent document with our, with our edits in there, so we wouldn't want to delete our comments. But if, if, if somebody, if, if it's sent as a Word document to all of us, and we put comments on that, there's no difference in terms of FOIA. We would still have to provide all of it. So, I don't think in terms of the format, that's really going to make any significant difference. Now, it, if it's just commenting on the document itself, that's a good, actually, that's a really good question. I'm thinking through that now.
Yeah. It'd be good if we do happen to go that route, to make sure that we have the, the clerk track.
Oh, yes.
The document and keep all the, there has to be some way to export all of the track changes to it, because there's revision history associated with it. I just don't know how to do it off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Yeah.
That's a really good question. I don't know what the, I don't know what the lawyer would say about that.
If we do it via email, then there's a clear tracking of it, because it's, that we, our emails don't get deleted. And then have the...
Yeah. That's a really good question, because if we're commenting, that might be construed as a meeting.
Correct.
Maybe that won't work.
Yep.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay. So, for me, we need to have a meeting to discuss this. As you all know, during meetings, there are different points of view that other board members have, that you don't have. And it may sway you from what you may have written in a document. And I'm just going to tell you, I have asked the question of the board attorney several times about board members talking among each other on emails. Even if we're not responding as a group, there is still, for me, a lack of interaction as board members. So, something goes out on paper, but yet you can't really have that interaction, or why would you think this? Or I agree with you, but I would like to see this also. That's an interaction that we are losing as a board, quite frankly. And we might call it coming to consensus, but in my opinion, we're still voting on moving things forward or not moving things forward. And we should be having a discussion about that and not electronically.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm, I get the sense, and I, I'm in agreement, that I think that, you know, we spend, we spend the time between now and when we get our next meeting schedule, which we'll check calendars and find availability, or by reviewing this, work on your comments. We'll, we'll, we'll figure out the, the right legal way to do that. But then bring all that together and discuss at our next meeting, so that we provide, that what we provide back to, to, to these gentlemen has, has the board's consensus with it. Because like this is going to be representative of our profile, and so, we all need to, we all need to agree to it, right? We don't have to vote on it, but we need to at least have a, have a consensus on it, so. Okay, great. I think we have good, good marching orders on that. Any other comments, questions before we let these gentlemen go? Sounds like the rain has subsided a little bit, so hopefully you don't need an umbrella to get home.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody need a break? I know that was a long discussion there. Okay. Let's do a quick bio break, as Ms. Bond just likes to say. All right, board, we'll go ahead and get back after it here. Next up, Katie Seidman, our MCEA president, will present an update from the Montgomery County Education Association.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, Dr. Graham, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present you a report on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. First, just as a reminder, the collective bargaining agreement for certified staff will expire in January 26. Our MCEA team has already been collecting information from staff regarding renegotiations for the CBA and we have a meeting scheduled next week with MCPS administration to begin the negotiation process. Secondly, I would like to address a few concerns that have been brought to our attention recently regarding staffing. The first concern relates to school nurses. As you're all well aware, our nurses serve an incredibly important role in our schools. However, if a nurse needs to be out for any reason, it is incredibly difficult to find a substitute nurse to cover that position because the requirements are different. Often, if a sub can't be found, that school is without a nurse for the day. We do have a few sub, a few nurse substitutes, as well as a float nurse position. But because of current nursing vacancies, those staff are often covering those permanent positions and are not available to sub for other nurse positions throughout the county as absences come up. I know that our lead nurse is doing their best to manage the vacancies and absences as they arise, but they can only do so much. Additionally, these vacancies may not be emphasized as much because nurses are categorized as classified employees in payroll, even though they require a certification to do their jobs. Because they are not, because they are grouped with the other classified staff, the vacancies and absences do not translate as significantly as I think they would if they were listed separately. To be fair, in the staffing report, all the classified vacancies are listed separately. But again, nurses are bundled within that, and so I think it doesn't stick out as much. This past spring, we found a lot of success in decreasing the number of vacancies for our speech language pathologists due to creative and purposeful ideas from the MCEA and the MCPS administration. So I'd like to see if a similar solution can be found here. The second staffing concern I would like to address is the continuous substitute shortage and one of what we believe is one of the potential aggravating factors. During the last staffing update, Dr. Wy, Dr. Widener highlighted our very high sub fill rate for teachers, which was 93% for the month of August. However, as many of you noticed, our paraprofessional fill rate is only 55% for the month of August. You may not be aware how chaotic even one unfilled position can be for a building, but it often touches every single employee in the building. Substitutes accept jobs for various reasons, but the details of the position usually play a role in why they choose to accept that absence. Subs generally only accept absences in positions they feel comfortable serving in. And frankly, it is often easier to sub for a classroom teacher than it is for a paraprofessional. The job requirements for a paraprofessional are incredibly varied and can sometimes change day to day. Additionally, they are often providing one-to-one services for students with disabilities. No student is the same, and that goes double for students with disabilities because no disability is the same. This can create a lot of confusion, conflict, and even unsafe environments for paraprofessionals in the course of their jobs. If a substitute has no training or experience in this type of environment, why would they accept a sub job to do so? I don't think that we are adequately preparing our substitutes to accept absences for our paraprofessional positions. And as a result, those positions are being left unfilled. Often, if there are multiple absences in the same building, the building administrator must kind of triage the most effective position for that substitute to fill, even if they didn't sign up for that particular absence. When a sub signs up for one position, but the building administrator asks them to fill a different position, the sub may reconsider accepting more positions at that school. Please don't misunderstand me. This is absolutely not a critique of our building administrators. They have to make decisions that they believe are in the best interests of the building and the functions that the building needs to happen daily. And it is 100% their prerogative to do so. I'm only shedding some light on maybe why it can be difficult to retain subs specifically for those positions. Additionally, the pay rate for a sub covering for a teacher is slightly higher than that of the pay rate for covering for a paraprofessional. Obviously, this difference makes sense based on the requirements of the positions, but it does beg the question, why would a sub choose a lower pay rate of a paraprofessional when they can choose the higher pay rate of a teacher with no additional required certifications for them to do that? Again, not a critique of the administration. They're doing what they can with what they have. I just wanted to give some practical, real-life context to what is a very complicated issue. And I believe that we can find more effective solutions to our sub shortage if we expand the team that is working on the issue. Lastly, related to staff absences. I wanted to share a common practice that you may not be aware of. When a teacher is absent in the secondary school and a substitute teacher cannot be found, other staff are often asked to cover their classes, usually during their planning times. When this happens, they should be filling out a time sheet for the planning time they lost during the day and then they are compensated in their paycheck. However, in elementary school, if a substitute teacher cannot be found, that teacher's class is split between the other teachers in that grade level. For example, if there are four second grade teachers on the team and one is out for the day, that class is split into thirds and divided between the other teacher's classes. So if a second grade teacher has 21 students in their class and a sub could not be found to cover their class, that class is split up between the other second grade teachers on the team and that is an additional seven students in each teacher's classes. The argument can be made that those teachers would already be teaching the same content with the same schedule during the day. So there's no time lost that needs to be compensated for. However, adding seven students to a class of 20 brings this total number to 27. And it may not seem like it, but an extra seven students in a class significantly changes the dynamic of the learning environment and makes a huge difference in the management of the bodies in the room. I'm not suggesting we get rid of this practice. We all know that we need to be flexible sometimes and sometimes this is the way to maintain the safety and well-being and the function of the building during the day. However, I'm suggesting that we look into some sort of process of compensation for elementary school teachers who are asked to absorb those additional students into their classes when a sub cannot be found. I will be bringing these concerns forward to Dr. Graham and Dr. Widener at our next communications meeting, but I did want the school board to be aware of these challenges as well. So again, we can work at these issues from all sides to find solutions quickly and collaboratively. Lastly, the MCEA will soon be sharing specific priorities from staff related to the upcoming school calendar discussion. However, I wanted to give a quick, general priorities from the staff to help your, inform your discussions moving forward. I've got four main ones tonight. I'm happy to share more specifics if you have questions, but I just wanted to give you the bullet points for this evening. The first, and is probably no surprise to you, a full week of spring break is high on the priority list for staff. Specifically, a Monday to Friday week. There was not a lot of interest in splitting the week Wednesday to Wednesday, Tuesday to Tuesday, something like that. More consistency in conference days and conference hours. This, again, is kind of a complicated topic because of the different schedules, the different secondary versus elementary. But we are looking for a little bit more consistency in those days and times. Protected work days throughout the years that are specifically not PD days, particularly surrounding the start and the ends of the quarters to help with grades, report cards, and dates such as that. Dr. Graham mentioned earlier that last Thursday, we had a work day where a lot of our staff were also attending professional development sessions. And with all due respect, I actually got a lot of concerns that staff did not feel prepared for their grade reporting deadlines, did not finish their conferences because of all of the professional development sessions that were scheduled on that day and were required for staff to attend. I am not saying that professional development is not important. We all know it's important. But I can guarantee you that a teacher would rather be in their room working for what they need to finish, prepare for their students, than go to a professional development if they had the choice. So what we're asking for is not to get rid of professional development days, but to have dedicated work days where none are scheduled. And none can be scheduled. That seems to be the issue that we're running into is we start the year with workdays and there's nothing scheduled. And then we get to October and hey, look, there's three professional development sessions scheduled on that day where there were not previously. So that's what we're looking for with that. Which leads me into my last bullet point. One that I know will be in direct opposition to many of the priorities of the school board. Staff are looking for less emphasis on 180-day calendar. Now again, I know that is in direct opposition to what a lot of your priorities are. But I would just like to be clear. It's our, our position is quality instructional days versus quantity of instructional days. If you told me, Katie, you only have 165 days, make them count, then that's what I would do. Teachers are planners. We will plan for the days of instruction that we have, not the other way around. And it's, the difference between 179 days and 180 days is negligible, especially if that 180th day is December 22nd. I realize that my report is much more in-depth, so thank you for the additional time this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Are there any questions I can answer for you tonight?
Thank you. School board, any questions or comments?
Thank you for bringing up the issue of the paraprofessionals. Because there were a lot of things I didn't think about with things that you said. But what I have heard from some of our, especially our RHIH folks, is that they do have some backgrounds in some of the areas. And if principals actually know that and they have requested them, then having to go through the whole process of being approved and all this can be cumbersome to make that happen. But it, it needs to be addressed. So with the classroom issue with splitting the students in the elementary level. So the teacher may be able to compensate, but is that the best thing for our students? To split them, because now you've got seven students that you don't teach every day and that you may not know how you need to help them.
And I would like to say, I don't think a principal... And I would like to say, I don't think a principal would say that that is the best thing for students as well. It's just, you gotta do what you gotta do some days, and that's sort of where we're at.
Right. So as far as the workdays and PD days, I thought we had come to an agreement at one point that there would be a separation between the two, and that you could not be required to do PD on certain workdays.
I also believe that that was something that we had talked about doing. I just don't know that it ever came to fruition, or I don't know that there were ever specific days labeled as, this is a workday, not a PD day. Especially with the transition in leadership, and, and Dr. Wydner's been doing two jobs related to the professional development calendar. I think maybe that just is something that didn't happen, but we're really looking for it to happen in the future.
Do you want to go around, Board? Go ahead.
Thank you so much for all of this information update. I, I heard the same thing about the paraprofessionals, not the, the exact details, but the difference in the compensation, so it makes sense to me why someone who's substituting, so this has been known for, this has been known for a while. This is not new, and so it seems to me the administration should be able to, to find a solution that respects the training for teaching, the teachers, but also make sure that we're, we're getting that, those paraprofessionals in the classroom where they're needed. I've heard, I, I know that that workday right before the end of the term is critical for teachers to get those grades in. So I think it's great that there's professional development, but the, just on the face of it, the logic of having it overlap with such a critical crunch time for teachers doesn't make sense to me. So whether it's scheduling in the calendar before the, when the calendar is set, these are the days for professional development. They're going to be set aside, and they're different, particularly for these crunch times makes sense to me. But I'm sympathetic to the, as a, as an instructor, when those grades are due, they're due, and you've got to get them done. So I think moving forward, whether it's through the calendar or some other mechanism, we need to protect that time for our teachers to make sure they're able to do what they need to do. Thank you. This is really helpful information.
Ms. Pardon?
Katie, thank you so much for all the information. You did make me aware of several things that I was not aware of, so I appreciate that. And I always appreciate you coming and letting us know what's going on and, and what we can do to help you all and make things better. I didn't have any more questions, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Okay, so you know I'm not a fan of spring break.
I do.
Okay, so that's, everybody knows that. Nobody knows where I stand on that. But I'm shocked with the feedback that I get about the school kickoff that that wasn't one of the issues, because the teachers that talk to me, and maybe because they know how I feel about spring break, and when I say that, it all doesn't come down to what, in my opinion, our teachers and staff just need. It's about our community and our students, okay? And that's why I stand where I stand. It's the same thing with having the days off. We've got lots of families that are lucky if they get the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth off, much less two weeks and then two or three days before, okay? So when I say those things with all due respect, I mean nothing by them, but I come from the point of the community, understanding that absolutely, but sometimes more just isn't more. But in, in our situation, it's a whole big picture, not just one singular.
Sure.
So with me saying that, that's why I stand where I stand on those, on those issues. But I have heard tremendously about teachers kind of saying, hey, the kickoff to school, we don't want a meeting. We want to be able to get in our classrooms. And I've said that year after year after year after year, but I never hear anything when it comes from the MCEA about that. So I never have that backup on that. So, you know, that's one, for instance, that our stu, our teachers could get in their classrooms and get, you know, the things doing, even if we have announcements over intercoms, you know, classroom to classroom, if we want to have motivational speakers that come in over that they can listen to. I mean, that's, that's something that I've heard from our staff, so just looking out after that. But unless something completely changes my mind, I still stand strong where I am. And, and, and I hope no one holds that against me, but like I said, that's coming from the community. And I do feel like it, it, we do need for our students, our test scores show it, our student achievement, because just because it's quality instruction, if a student is out another week and doesn't retain, then it, it, that's part of the picture, in my opinion, as well. It's retention, not just about the quality instruction. It's about how our students are retaining it. And if they're out a week, and then they come back three weeks, and then they're out two more weeks, and then they come back three weeks and they're out another two days, then our staff is not finding a better way to say, working theirself to death to try to reteach and redo everything because it's not being retained. So that's another reason why I stand where I stand on the days.
I will absolutely look into the, the priorities related to the opening of school and get an MCEA opinion for you on that. And there's absolutely no hard feelings. I know that some of you are not interested in a week-long spring break. I know that some of you are very interested in a hundred-and-eighty days. My perspective is the staff perspective, but it is only one of the, the pieces of the perspective, so absolutely understand.
Ms. Purcell?
I don't have anything specific to remark upon that's, I think, very different from my, my colleagues, but I think your emphasis in that, bringing ideas from the MCEA to help solve some of these problems has been successful before. I hope that's something that we can continue, so thanks.
Dr. Roundtree?
Thank you for the report today. And I, yeah, just, the elementary teachers, splitting classes between them. Every time that I'm teaching ten kids or so, I usually, well, I always have another adult with me because it's in volunteer roles, and you add three or four more to that, and I need extra hours to recuperate afterwards. So saying that it doesn't increase their, their day of work, it's, that's not even completely true, because they need that extra time afterwards to, to rest their mind and recuperate from having that extra burden of an additional twenty-five percent or thirty percent of students. And then I have a question, I don't, maybe it's the, the administration that would answer. What are the difference in requirements for classroom subs versus paraprofessional subs?
You mean, there are different duties? Is that what you're asking?
The different requirements to fill the roles.
Oh. Am I correct, Amanda, Dr. Wydner, that now for the teaching role, they have to have at least high school education and be twenty-one?
Couldn't hear you. There's two rates of pay for teachers with a bachelor's or a master's degree and teachers without, but the, the minimum requirement is a high school diploma.
And that is not a requirement for our paraprofessionals?
Not that I believe.
No, I don't think so.
No.
No.
Do they have to have a high school degree?
Yes.
Okay. So neither of them have to have college degrees?
Correct.
There's different pay scales. The pay scale for a para with a high school degree and a teacher, or a teacher sub with a high school degree but not a college degree, is the same or different?
It is almost the same. A substitute teacher position is eighty-nine seventy-eight per day, but a teacher works a seven-and-a-half-hour day. A, a substitute paraprofessional is eleven ninety-seven an hour, and that does add up to eighty-nine seventy-eight per day, but most paraprofessionals don't work the same hours as a teacher, so it does end up being a little bit less than a teacher without advanced degrees. And it's significantly less than a teacher, teacher position with a bachelor's or a master's degree.
Okay, and a paraprofessional with an advanced degree is paid that same rate or paid a higher rate?
The same rate, the same hourly rate.
And did you say that was eleven dollars?
Eleven ninety-seven.
So don't we have a-
Okay, so that's a big problem.
And I, to be clear, that is our, our substitute pay rate.
Don't we have a minimum pay rate that's higher than that?
For our full-time staff, we do.
That's not full-time.
That's only for full-time staff, okay. Right?
Which was why most subs will take a teacher-
Correct.
-position rather than a para position, which accounts for why we have a less, a smaller fill rate.
Right, because the, the teacher that has an advanced degree gets paid more significantly for the teacher sub.
It's just more lucrative to always take the teacher pay if you're going to sub rather than to take a para.
Okay.
So this just goes back to my constant comment. If we pay people, they will come and work for us. If we just throw pennies at people, they're going to go someplace else and pick up real money.
And I will say, historically, I believe we had quite, I mean, we were not unique, but we had quite the massive substitute shortage several years ago. And so we lessened the requirement. There was no longer a requirement to have a bachelor or a master's degree, and we did increase the pay at that point for both paraprofessional positions and substitute teacher positions. And I do believe that was quite successful in filling the gap for our substitute, especially with our, our teacher positions. Our, our substitute teacher fill rate did not used to be ninety-three percent. It's, it's quite good now. I would just like to see our paraprofessional fill rate be just as good.
I know I already had a comment, but kind of, I, I spoke with one yesterday, and it, money was never mentioned. It was about acknowledging and being prepared for what the class offered. Even the, even the people that we hire for those positions, get in there and do not realize what is involved. It's, it's about being prepared for that. That's a whole different ballgame than being in a classroom. So comparing it to just about money, I agree with Ms. Franklin, we don't pay them enough, but I don't believe that's the complete issue. I think it's the preparation of knowing what they're going to be looking at, because that takes a special person to deal with those positions opposed to someone just also having a special talent to do a classroom. But I think it's very, very different, and I've had many, many, many people and share that with me yesterday, someone who's been in it twenty-five years, said that's the biggest issue, is we get them, they go into the classroom and go, this is not for me. I can't do this again. So, yeah, I, I don't know where we need to go from there, what we need to find out, but I think it's a bigger picture than just they don't make quite the money that a classroom substitute makes.
I agree, and that is why I mentioned that I think we should look at the training for our substitutes, because I do think that substitutes would be willing to take those positions with adequate training. But one, our substitutes don't want to be put in a position where they're compromised. Two, they want to do what's best for the kids, and if what's best for the kids is them not taking that position because they're not trained to do so, then they won't.
That's right.
So if we were to offer our paraprofessionals better pay for the work that they do and the training, because I raised that issue a couple of years ago after talking with one of our paraprofessionals and the suggestion that she made so that people would know exactly what they're getting into, then we may be able to retain more people who want to do the job because they know what the job is versus walking in blind, and you're dealing with things that you just did not sign up for or that you thought you didn't sign up for. So, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do.
That would be my first suggestion before increasing the pay rate. Of course, we want to pay everybody so much more than we do, but we have budget constraints. My first suggestion would be the training, specifically for our substitutes. In our recently ratified CBA for our classified staff, we do have an article in there that talks specifically about adequate training for our paraprofessionals before entering the classroom. So we do have that stipulation in our CBA for our full-time staff. But again, my recommendation is that we look at some sort of training for our substitutes to be able to take those positions.
I'm gonna keep jumping in here because this is an issue for me. So when we talk about budget restraints, and I just talked about this with our technicians and folks that we wanted to give stipends to, we always say we have budget restraints when it comes to our support staff and how we support them, because they're the last ones to get whatever is, is left over some points until we get to the point where we just can't do anything to get them to come, and then we throw some more at them. We need to make sure we are compensating all of our employees, no matter what level they are, and stop saying it's a budget restraint, because this is about our students and how they're going to be supported, whether someone cutting the grass or someone helping a student to, with their bathroom needs. We need to pay our people. I hope that's-
So- Dr. Roundtree, go ahead, but don't trigger Ms. Franklin, please.
Okay, I'll try, yeah. Continuing up on my, my questions. Oh, what does the training look like for teacher subs and paraprofessional subs? And are, do teachers, teaching subs receive the training that's adequate to be a paraprofessional sub?
The training would be different, because a teaching sub basically is taught how to do anything that a teacher would need to do during a school day. A para sub would be working quite often with special education students and needs a completely different training for how you work with those students, how to de-escalate behaviors, that type of thing, so it would be very different.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it would be nice if, I mean, first, just may at least make the hourly rates for those subs with advanced degrees the same, no matter whether they're a t, a teacher sub or a para sub. And then if we could increase the pay overall, that would be great. And then we may end up getting some of our teaching subs if their hourly rate is the same as the, as that is, what it would be for a para sub, to take the training to be para subs and actually do some of the, the para subbing as well. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments? Very robust conversation tonight. Thanks for bringing this up now. I mean, it's, it's great timing, I was here, right? We're, we're starting to work on the budget. You know, a lot of what we brought up tonight are budgetary implications, which is good to factor them in, the calendar as well, you know, start talking about that soon, so it's good timing. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
All right, Board, next up, we have a school nutrition program supplemental appropriation. The, the letter itself can be found in Board Docs. Do I have a motion to authorize a supplemental appropriation to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school nutrition programs operating budget in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars? So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gitchry and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the budget calendar for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven was presented as a first read on October seventh. It's brought back tonight for approval. You can find that updated calendar also in Board Docs tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven budget calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Parton and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Sure. No? Okay. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor. Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Special Education Advisory Committee membership was presented at the fir, as a first read on October seventh. It's brought back tonight for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six committee membership for the Special Education Advisory Committee as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Bond, any discussion?
Yeah, I stated it during our last discussion, but my spouse is on this committee, but my, uh, my vote is not reflective of whether or not she's on it.
Okay. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Abstain.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstain.
Motion carries. And next up, Jason Garrettson, our Director of Student Services and Safety, will provide updated information and committee recommendations on the School Safety Audit Committee, School Health Advisory Board, and the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Thank you, sir. So we did, um, we, we do want to discuss three committees tonight, make some recommendations. Um, current status of these committees, we, we do currently have a School Safety Audit Committee, uh, that stands in place as a school board committee. We do have a School Health Advisory Board, more commonly called SHAB, which stands as a school board committee. And then we additionally have a Mental Health Advisory Committee that stands as a superintendent's committee. I was quite pleased tonight to hear, uh, in the superintendent's search, um, that our students feel safe in the buildings, uh, and also the emphasis on our mental health priorities. I, I thought it was kind of interesting how it ties into tonight's presentation. At the October seventh meeting, you did have these, two of these committees brought forward to you as a first read. Um, we did have some, some questions, we did have some concerns shared with us regarding team composition, uh, particularly around the Safety Audit Committee and the School Health Advisory Board. So tonight, we bring forward some recommendations for the Board's consideration. Uh, first, we'll start with the School Safety Audit Committee. Uh, we did go back to the code as we discussed, uh, at the October seventh meeting. And when we took a look at the code, uh, we, we see that it establishes the School Safety Audit Committee as a superintendent's committee. Um, it appears as if we've been operating for the last several years as a, as a board committee. Uh, when we dig in closer, uh, we, we read that potentially as a superintendent's committee. We put the statement there beneath it that says the School Safety Audit Committee will review the completed school safety audit and submit any plans as needed for improving school safety to the division superintendent for, for submission to the local school board. We had quite a lengthy discussion with board members, uh, that in our current standing committee that has been meeting quarterly with law enforcement and EMS, that there were some contents in that discussion that probably weren't suitable for more of a public discussion, uh, but very, very necessary. I believe I shared that, that, that committee is absolutely essential to my work, again, in helping make our students feel safe. Uh, so what we'd like to recommend or possibly suggest to the Board tonight for consideration is that we maintain a separate school safety committee, and it gets a little confusing with titles, a separate school safety committee that will conduct that regular, necessary dialogue with local law enforcement at EMS as we have for the past several years. Um, this would be a superintendent's committee. Additionally, we would also have the superintendent's committee to review the safety audit probably once a year to bring back those recommendations to the superintendent for sharing with the Board. We do understand that certain individuals may serve on both committees. I probably would serve on both committees. We would most likely issue, um, invitations to the two chiefs and the sheriff, who would likely serve or send designees to serve on both committees. But this does give us the opportunity to talk with some of that confidential thing, some of those confidential topics that we really can't put forward, um, to the public. And then also have the public group that could include parents and, and other representatives who could come in, review the safety audit, share those recommendations with the superintendent to then be presented before the Board. I can stop there for questions, or I can make the next recommendation and then stop for questions at the end. What would you like, Mr. Chair?
Let's maybe pause there, because I know that that, that this one area kind of caused a lot of discussion last meeting. Let's, and maybe give you some, some guidance along the way here.
Yes, sir.
Board, any questions or comments on this first recommendation?
So both of these are superintendent committees? Neither one's a board committee?
That's how we read the code, once we reviewed it from October seventh, sir.
So there's the, you report, that, those committees would report to the superintendent, and then the superintendent would share with the Board anything that they deem appropriate to share with the Board or needing to share with the Board.
By, by code, the review of the audit would go through the superintendent to the Board.
Okay. And both of these are committees required by code?
No, sir. Only the Safety Audit Committee. We have expressed our great value in the regular quarterly, um, safety team meetings where we discuss all the drills, um, debrief any major incidences, review crisis plans. Uh, we still have, in my opinion, a great need for that opportunity to meet quarterly uh, with our law enforcement and EMS team and key members of the division staff as well.
Okay, and so I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to why there's the two committees. Why, why we just, why you're not just having one School Safety Audit Committee that's a superintendent committee under code that is doing that work?
Because we do have some conversations, um, such as, for example, a real easy example is planning the lockdown drills and debriefing the lockdown drills. That might not be appropriate for parents and general community members, uh, to be a part of that discussion uh, due to potential safety concerns. I, I want to say that, I want to say that delicately without being offensive.
Right. Now, yeah, part of the question is, is as you've laid out code here, is there a need for a broad community similar committee to the School Safety Audit Committee?
I rely heavily on our current standing committee, which we have called the School Safety Audit Committee for the last several years.
Right.
I think the concern for the Board October seventh was you don't see parents and other community members on there. It's essentially all law enforcement, EMS, and school board members. When that question came up, the discussion was some of those contents probably aren't fair game for a general discussion. And that's why we kind of split at this point and said, let's go ahead and add a specific Safety Audit Committee that will do that work and talk about the publicly available school safety audit information, bring back recommendations to the superintendent. And then we'd also like to continue to have our quarterly meetings with law enforcement.
Right. So those discussions, as for me, at least, were because it was presented as a Virginia Code Committee. There was a board-level committee that, from my understanding, requires those other things. If it's not required under Virginia Code as a board-level committee and it's only required as a superintendent-level committee, I, I think we're good operating how you were, Bennett's a superintendent committee, not a board committee. That's my opinion.
Good.
Thank you so much. Um, we had a lot in that meeting, so I did look again at that portion of code and did see that it is a superintendent's committee. Um, so I'm in favor of expanding that Safety Audit Committee to include that broader representation as the code recommends. But I was kind of thrown off because it was like, why is it being approved if it's a superintendent's committee? So it makes sense to not bring that list for us to appoint, because then it does become a board, a, a school board committee. Now, whether or not there's a separate committee of the administration, I mean, the, the administration doesn't ask for approval for all of its committees. It's only the ones that are bor, are required of the code that, um, need to be established. And if they're board committees, then the Board needs to appoint them. Um, I, I know that there is, um, for the School Safety Audit Committee, a lot more information that's provided, either, I think, by VDOE of what they are required to do. Does it include items like reviewing lockdown drills and some of the things?
No, no, sir. Primarily, what it allows us to do, I mean, the components, and, and you're gonna test my memory here a little bit, the, the components of the School Safety Audit, we have to annually review, um, the school crisis plans, which you guys then approve typically late July, early August. There is the school climate survey, uh, that is administered to staff, um, every year. The student climate survey that is, it, um, administered to students, middle school one year, high school the next. So every other year for those folks, we get those results. All of that information's all publicly available. Um, it, it all ends up being put out to the public anyway. Um, every three years, there is a physical school safety audit. Um, I think the next one is due twenty twenty-six, if I'm not mistaken, on the three-year rotation. And then I want to say, there's a fifth component that I'm, I'm actually drawing a blank on while I'm standing up here. But, but it's not the day-to-day routine debrief kinds of things. It, it would be those more conversations around, um, hey, look at the responses to the survey. Um, maybe if we did have some data that said our students really are reporting they don't feel safe, then that team would say, well, these are maybe the things that could help kids feel safer at school. And maybe they would make some recommendations. We'd take those to the superintendent, superintendent would share those with the Board. So again, it's, it's a lot more, uh, it's almost exclusively publicly available information in the end anyway. It's just bringing that group together to discuss those topics. And then it is a more formal avenue to make recommendations through the superintendent to the Board.
That makes a whole lot of sense, thank you. The other observation I would, uh, offer is that I did note that there are other divisions that do have in their school board policy a committee policy that delineates which committees are school board committees, which ones are superintendent committees, the makeup of those committees. Uh, because I know that this has been an issue for years now in this division of like trying to figure out, okay, is this a superintendent's committee? Is this a school board committee? Who do they report to? How do they report? And so my recommendation, if, if, if there's a consensus on the Board and if the administration think it worthwhile, to actually create a policy that delineates those committees. Who's the responsibilities, membership, how they report, how often they report? Because all of that's in the code. So basically, what we're doing now is whenever there are questions, we're going back to the code. We're not looking at our own policy to figure out some of these basic questions of operation. So I know that other, I, you probably know this as well, that there are other divisions that actually have a, a policy that, that goes through all of this.
And I will say, I guess this is, I guess, year six for me in the position. I want to say the first year, uh, that I was over at school board office, we, we didn't do this. And then there was an effort to say, hey, we need to take certain policies before the Board. I think this one got pulled in because it has a life in code, um, without really reading close to, to see it say it's a superintendent's committee that relays information up. Um, I did share with the Board, October seventh, um, up here, I kind of made a promise I would reach out to some other divisions. I also did that as well. Um, on the Safety Audit Committee, um, the, I reached out to three divisions, heard back from two. Um, they shared very, uh, for lack of a better, informal, right? They do bring together a team, but it's, it appeared to be much less formal than the process we seem to be going through for this team back on October seventh, which, again, reading a little closer led to some of these recommendations.
Ms. Franklin, I mean to skip over you there. Any questions or comments?
So what you proposed makes sense to me. I think community would really appreciate having some more information about what's going on with safety. As far as, um, the conversation and the understanding about which committees are board committees and which committee, which committees are superintendent committees, we actually had that discussion and had that breakdown and that understanding of this. And it was spurred on by the, um, interaction with our, um, gifted committee. So all that was brought before the Board and everything was clarified. And so somewhere, that information is there already.
You, you see some of that as well. When, when some of our committees come forward, they, they talk about voting sta, or voting status. All of the committees I work with, we, we don't operate under voting status. We, we work to come to, to agreement. Um, we, we've, we've never taken a vote in any of my meetings, and that seems to be a very big part of some of the other committees, some differences.
Ms. Purcell?
Uh, just thank you for doing all the background research on this, Mr. Garrettson. Um, I agree with my colleagues that, that these changes seem to make a lot of sense. The school safety committee that can be more, um, discreet, discuss things a bit more privately, uh, but then the, um, the audit committee that does have some community members that may just share perspectives that are important. So thank you for doing this, and I'm, I'm in support of the change.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Ms. Parton?
So, thank you, um, thank you for all your hard work, because I've been with you on this since the beginning. So, um, it, it's, it's a lot, and it's a lot to think about and do, so thank you for all of that. And I do want to bring to the attention that this committee that we've had for Jason, what, six years now? Over six years?
My whole time.
Since the, um, strategic plan where we, we put these teams together. So I just have a little bit of knowledge on the other side, knowing that all of our agencies work very well and collaboratively together. Um, they're a great team, um, they work good with each other, they are good with the community, they are trusted by the community. And, you know, that's why, that's why our kids are saying they feel safe in school. It's just the bottom line. Um, they need to keep doing what they're doing. We, we do need to keep things, um, you know, between first responders and law enforcement for the safety of our schools. Um, that's why our kids are saying they feel safe. And I, I have community members all the time tell me how safe and wonderful this community is. So we are very blessed to have such safe schools and a safe community. Um, I am fine with it going to a superintendent board and us having the safety committee to, um, relay any dialogue to the Board uh, from either the superintendent or the committee on what, what we need to know about. So I'm fine with the change, absolutely.
Great. And I, I agree with the change as well. Yeah, I do, I do like the idea, just in the bigger picture, to kind of codify the committee structures, right? So, you know, so we don't, I agree, I agree with Ms. Franklin, we've seen it presented before. Um, and it's in a meeting somewhere, right? If we had it in our policy, we wouldn't have to track it down every time, so.
Can I ask if there is a consensus of the Board to, to, because I do remember that presentation, but it's, does us no good if it's just in Board Docs. And because these, some of these committees are required by the code, we, it makes sense to have the policy. So is it possible to, to, to query the Board now? To see if there's a consensus to, to task the administration with, um, bringing a policy before us that would, um, that would go through all the committees that are required by code and not required but are, um, that have been established, like, you know, calendar committee or whatever else that are, there are longstanding committees? Because one of the things we heard was, the survey is, community input is so important. And I think this is one way of making it visible and concrete.
Can I get a show of hands on the Board about, uh, pursuing that?
Right. But again, the presentation that, um, Mr. Hudson and I are talking about was before you were on the Board. This was a detailed, big discussion went on for months to clarify what was what and who did what when. So it should be there. But are you saying it's in Board Docs still? So it should be there. But are you saying it's in board docs still?
It, it should be in the history, but I actually remember that because I was, I was involved with the GAC at that point and, and was really pushing because I knew it was a, a board committee. And so I'm sure it's somewhere, but it need to be, it needs to be elaborated because, you know, the code's going to outline the responsibilities of, of those committees.
Okay, great.
And all, all those committees that are required by code, if we can get a reference to the code, section two, whether they're board committees or superintendent committees. And for this slide, there's been some back and forth about which committee is which here. The school safety audit committee is the law enforcement school division committee, no community members. And the school safety committee is the community member one.
All the way around.
You have it backwards, sir.
Okay, the code has, the, has it called out as school safety audit committee.
Right. And, and that will be the committee that includes, that could include essentially parents, students, community members. Because we're reviewing the audit, which becomes public information anyway.
Okay, I got you.
The school safety committee, the tight team.
Does the audit become public information by default?
Major, major portions of it become.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it'd be good just, in these bullet points to have it called out specifically who the, what the makeup of the committees are.
Okay. I was confused by that too. I was going to ask the question, but then I gleaned it out of what you said.
Too, too many safeties on one slide. I understand.
Yeah, but like as a part of codifying this in policy, we'll, you know, be clear in terms of the makeup and what's, what's public and not and everything else, so.
Right.
Okay, we get a consensus, I feel like, on the board to, to pursue that, so we'll work that. Okay. So is everybody good on school safety before we move on? All right.
Okay. So the next slide, we talk about two other committees, school health advisory board, mental health advisory committee. School health advisory board is one of those code dictated committees. And we give you a reference there to the code, and it talks about establishing the school board committee, broad-based community representation, including but not limited to, gives a list of various parents, students, health professionals, educators, educators and others. It's an if, so we don't have to have a school health advisory board. I'm proud to say that when the law changed and it was no longer required, we were a division that kept it while many others let it slip away. But it is an if, an if established, it says we will help develop health policy in the schools, evaluate the status of school health, health education, school environment and health services. We have operated the school health advisory board as a board, a board-directed advisory committee. We have done our own mental health advisory committee that went back several years ago, grassroots effort, put together largely by students at the time. Young lady spoke tonight about approved mental health days that directly came from that committee several years ago. What we find, and I am on both committees, what we find, that we see lots of overlap on meeting, on many of those meeting agendas between those two committees. I think most people would agree, mental health is clearly an aspect of total health. So we'll talk about it in mental health and then two weeks later, it'll come up in the school health advisory. So we did think if there were concerns around the representation on the SHAB committee, then perhaps we could consolidate those two committees together. And if we were to do that, we gave you a link. Ms. Osborne, I don't know if I can open the link from here, if you don't mind helping me. If we took those two recommended committees and put them together as one school health advisory board, that's how that committee would look. We have to be a little careful with numbers because in code it does, for some reason, say no more than 20 members. And we start to get up there pretty high. So I think we are in a position to say we have 23 total people, 18 representatives, five division appointees, right? So maybe I'm not quite a representative. I am the director of student services, chairing the team. If we get concerned about that number of 20. But I felt like if we were working toward these two committees already, I would hate to take somebody off a team who wanted to come volunteer and work with us. Lastly, I would say if this pleases the board, we still would have room for a couple of students who we'd really like to continue to, to try to recruit and pick up wherever we can. That is an area where we still don't have representation. But you can see, we have good representation, I believe, from the four various communities in the division. We also have a, a good number of those health professionals, educators and others. So again, if, if this would please the board, we would recommend essentially a consolidation of our mental health advisory committee, a superintendent's committee into the school health advisory board, making it a larger, more robust committee. And it would then become the school health advisory board, a school board-directed, code-driven advisory committee.
Okay, great. Board, who has questions on this? That, so that consolidated, I'm sorry, that consolidated version is not the version that we have in board docs?
That would be if, if you were agreeable to this recommendation, that link is the team that shared there with you. And that's, that's why I tried to put the watermark draft is because that is a team that you guys have not seen before.
Roger that. Okay. Board, questions or comments?
I'm all in favor because I do remember reading about SHAB, that mental health is one of the items. Correct me if I'm wrong. Doesn't it mention, it mentions mental health?
Not speci, well, not specifically, but in very broad, general terms. In the first bullet there, it talks about school health, health education, the school environment and health services.
Okay, maybe I read that somewhere else, but that makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, one, another thing we saw from the survey was an emphasis, we need to have an emphasis on mental health. And so I think combining the two makes, makes good sense, particularly because of the breadth of what is recommended for the membership of SHAB. So, thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Great. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so I just had a question about the 20-member total. So if I understood correctly, you were proposing that the school board office personnel would be something along the lines of administrative advisors and not actually members, and the rest would be members?
That, that's what keeps me below 20.
I like it.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Purcell?
I think in a previous year, was there a student representative on this particular?
We, we had a, a young man who served with us for a number of years, who graduated.
I think given the information that we got earlier tonight about just the concern that students have about mental health, hopefully, and with some of that creative counting, that might lend some flexibility to, to how many members there are, it'd be great to get student voices back on this committee. But yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Mr. Garrettson.
Ms. Bond?
I'm all in agreement. Thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
It just makes sense to combine the committees with all of the overlap, like you, like you had said. So it looks like we've got great representation, a little bit more than what we normally see from some of the communities. So that, that's really, makes me happy to see that. And we've got some great people serving on this community with, with good knowledge about a lot of things. So hopefully, we can, we can do a lot of help. So yes, I'm definitely for it.
All right, great. Very cool. So, so with this being a school board committee, then we do need to vote on this. I guess my question to the board, since this is a fairly significant change from what we saw last time, are we comfortable voting on it tonight or do we want to treat this as a first read?
I motion to accept the school health. Can you pull the PowerPoint up so I can read the?
School Health Advisory Board.
School Health Advisory Board Committee, or Board Committee, as presented in this draft form.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Pardon, any discussion, any additional discussion?
Yeah, I have a, a question. So I did, I, I saw it in the brochure because VDO has a long brochure about SHAB. Is there anybody, one of the areas that is identified and discussed in that brochure is substance abuse? Is there anybody on the committee that can address that particular issue? I, I don't have that committee makeup in front of me right now.
Dr. Ray from the, the Community Health Board has a strong background in substance abuse.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Any more discussion?
So I'm just looking to see, is, is there a student that's on SHAB? Is that what?
Sir, not yet.
Is that what you wanted, Ms. Purcell? Did somebody mention having a student on that committee?
I, I feel like I have room for two more. Happy, happy to take students.
I don't think that should hold up our vote tonight so that the committee can, you know, start its work. Mr. Garrettson, it's possible to add people to the committee after we've approved it. Would we need to approve it again or would they just kind of be able to be absorbed?
I personally feel like the board could direct me to accept two students if they were to come forward.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, that's fine.
Motion so amended.
All right, great. Any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, policy seven dash one dot six, monitoring for disparities and outcomes, is presented tonight as a first read. Stacy Wright, our Director of Equity at University, is available for questions if needed. I guess it might be helpful just to kind of give a quick little high level on what we're looking at.
Good evening. So in our July 29th meeting, when we were doing the student, student code of conduct, that we decided that there was a portion that had been taken out of the student code of conduct for monitoring disparities and outcomes for students. And that we would pull that out and make a separate policy that, that defined especially that. We took all of the suggestions from the board members. We also had some suggestions for community members and just placed those things in one policy. And that's the policy that you see before you now.
Great, thank you. School board, who has questions and comments? This is just a first read tonight, obviously. I think one thing, if, if I'm not mistaken, one thing that was asked was if, if we could see the, the discipline matrix. That's not, still hasn't been shared to us.
Yes, and it was there as a clickable link. But I don't think because that it was in PDF that you can really see the discipline matrix. But we can make sure that we get that to you because I went, I looked for it today as well, trying to click on it to make sure that it still worked, but it's not there. But we can definitely make sure that we share that with you because I was just looking at that today.
Great.
And I think you can click on it.
Oh, you can? Okay.
I wasn't able to here.
Okay. PDF and add it to board docs.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I mean, I know that they're going to be looking at, because they made some changes in the discipline from the state, like how they coded some of the behavioral code. And so we have a few of those that we'll probably have to fix on this discipline matrix. But we already know what they are and we're aware of those. And so Mr. Garrettson and I will be working on that. I left it on his desk this afternoon.
Okay, great, thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
I just note that I was a little confused on the legal references. I think that there was a typo or something because of some, there's a, I just look at that. There's a part of a parentheses where it looks like maybe two parts of the code were spliced together or something because I was trying to figure out what portion of the code was being referred to. I just couldn't tell because of the way it was typed in there.
Okay, and I can look at that and make sure that you all get that and make those changes and give them to Ms. Osborne so she can get that to you along with the fixed discipline matrix before our next read.
Okay, thank you.
We paste exercises or something, so?
Probably.
All right, great. Board, anything else? I think you've been working on this together.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. All right, next up, Dr. Mike Brown, our Director of Facilities, will present information regarding MCPS elevator operations upgrades.
Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Graham, I just want to share, share some information about our elevators. At a previous board meeting, you'd asked me to gather some information about upgrading our elevators. And I put some information together here, you know, why do we need this operational elevator upgrade? Is, is to allow easier access for our public at events such as sports assemblies, parent, parent nights. What will it provide? It will actually, we can actually have a dual functionality for our elevators. So during the normal school day, the elevators will still be controlled by a key access. For school events that the general public will be attending, the elevators will be able to be used like a normal elevator with a button. So, and also I just want to note, we are currently in compliance with all ADA codes and regulations on that. We do have a vendor that we work with on a, on a regular basis that can provide that service. It will cost $15,555 for our nine elevators in the division. And the timeline of completion is probably about three weeks to a month, but it's also dependent on the equipment, getting the vendor's schedule and getting that installed at, at our schools.
Okay, thanks for pulling that together. Board, any questions?
Can this be covered out of our one cent set aside for capital improvements?
I would think so, yes.
Yeah, I would be willing to vote on going ahead with this at that level.
Do you want to vote tonight? This, this wasn't as an action, but I think you might get a vote if you wanted it.
Were there any other, well, I can make a motion and then somebody can comment.
Go around and get questions. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you so much. $15,000 doesn't seem like that much considering, you know, if someone falls on those stairs because they didn't have access to an elevator, the cost could be much higher. I think some people might quibble with whether we're completely compliant, but I say we do it. I mean, this has been an issue and we've heard about it for a long time. $15,000 to me sounds like it's, that's not that much. So yes, I am in favor of getting this done right away.
Any other comments or questions? Can I get a motion to approve this, this elevator upgrade?
I move that we approve this, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we approve the recommendation of upgrading the elevators so that they have dual functionality.
Second.
Second, great. Any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll. Oh, sorry, that was Dr. Getchery and Dr. Roundtree.
Okay. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, sir. All right, next up, Dr. Lori Comer, our Director of Secondary Education, will present information on the feasibility of creating a behind-the-wheel driver's education program in our high schools.
Good evening, everyone. We had some discussion about behind-the-wheel instruction for driver's education. Currently, there are two parts to driver's education, both the in-classroom and the behind-the-wheel part. Our current situation is that we offer the in-classroom and we're, this year, in the 25-26 school year, we are servicing 715 students in our division. And I've got it broken down for each school for you. And that is just for in-the-classroom part. Currently, our students are responsible to secure their own behind-the-wheel training through one of the private companies that are available in the area. And that classroom section, this is what it includes. We have 36 different sessions, that's a minimum of 50-minute sessions. We offer this in conjunction with our Health PE 10. That's when our students take that course. And the third component is the 90-minute parent presentation that they must attend. And by the way, we have our very last one of those tomorrow evening at Christiansburg High School. So for any parents that have not attended yet this year, they can still get one more session in and for the student and the parent to attend that together. With the behind-the-wheel component, right now, we have at least three companies in the area that are operating these behind-the-wheel companies where they're offering this instruction. Students have to drive for a minimum of seven hours behind the wheel and observe for seven hours behind the wheel. We developed a little committee. We found some folks, our Health PE lead for the division was on that committee along with a driver's education teacher. And we even brought in one of the folks from one of the companies so that we would get their perspective as we look through this. In preparing the presentation, I also talked with folks from VDOE that are over the driver's education program to get their perspectives and to get their use, their input on how we need to go about doing this. So typically, they take students out in pairs so that one student can observe while the other one drives. So that's end up getting their 14 hours and could potentially get it in seven hours or seven sessions. Most driving instructors do say that some students are not ready after seven hours and need more time, especially if they haven't had a lot of other practice driving, that they need more than that seven hours. And we do know that the House Bill 2213 was what strongly recommends that school boards look at this. In speaking with the VDOE, we did find out while all school divisions do offer the in-course within the classroom, only 28% of them do not offer behind the wheel. And that, right now, it can be offered during the school day, it can be offered after-school hours, either before or after-school, and/or on weekends or during the summer time. Other divisions, some divisions do offer this. So we asked the question as a committee, how are they doing that? What are they doing differently in order to offer it? Some offer during the school day, but you have to have double the number of teachers. So you've got one teacher in the classroom doing the in-class instruction while the other teacher pulls students out and goes and drives if it happens during the school day. Another option is for when that teacher is free, that they pull students, but then they have to miss other classes that they may need to be in. A next way they do it is they offer it before and after school, and our certified instructors are paid a stipend to work either before or after the school day or on the weekend. There is some minimal reimbursement from the VDOE for some of the cost incurred. And they do put a cap on how much you can charge students. And what we have found that for school systems that do offer behind the wheel, they charge their students for it. We didn't find any that did it totally free for their students. But at May, June, we have to go into our information systems and we have to file a report. Thus far, we've clicked, we do not offer behind the wheel. If we did offer behind the wheel, we would need to include information as to what we are spending on that. That would be our vehicle costs, maintenance, our, what we're spending on insurances, what we're spending on all these different components in order. Personnel is the one thing they do not factor into that formula. When they factor the formula, we do get reimbursed a portion of that amount. That formula, and based on how much you spend, determines a cap that VDOE would give us as to what we could charge students. No school division is allowed to ever make a profit on this. It's only to help incur some of the costs, but it does not cover all the costs and personnel is not included. Our current staffing, we have nine certified driver's education instructors within our county. We do have some other folks in our county that are driver's education certified, but they might have positions like athletic directors, they may be an administrator somewhere in the building, in a building somewhere, PE teachers, elementary. Actually, one of our elementary PE teachers has his own company that he runs on the side. And the local driving company that we spoke with specifically is currently paying $27.50 an hour, and they cannot find enough drivers. Staffing is a huge concern. When, as part of this, we did talk with our transportation people here and we looked at different ways, where would we get vehicles? Where are we going to find the cars for these students to drive? While we have a fleet of cars and, that's owned by Montgomery County Public Schools, once a car is used for driver's education purposes, we can't use it for anything else. With that, we were advised that the best thing to see if we could possibly lease out from the companies that are not using them during the day to use them for that. We don't know for sure if that would happen. Otherwise, we would have to purchase or lease vehicles. And then Ms. Angie Bland did check on our insurance and it would not significantly raise if we did decide to do that. So what we did is we came up with some options or some things to think about in moving forward. And option one is to provide that behind-the-wheel training during the school day. With that, it would be hiring a minimum of three staff members. And this group looked at, you know, Blacksburg could use their own extra person, as could Christiansburg, based on those numbers from one of those first slides. We think that Auburn and Eastmont High School could potentially share a person, but still with three people and an average salary plus benefits ranging anywhere from $75,000 to $80,000, you can see what that would cost. If having to purchase vehicles, we see that cost, insurance would be minimal, and then of course, some of those prices could be partially reimbursed to us. And keep in mind, this is just a disclaimer at the bottom of all these slides, divisions can charge a per pupil amount to the student. Option number two is we could do this before and after school on our Saturdays, weekends. We could also implement that during the summer hours when students and staff are, have a little bit more flexibility in their schedule. Once again, if we did that, we would, it would take approximately 5,005 hours, and that's with two students in the car at the time, one driving, one observing. And it would still require approximately 5,005 hours to service an average of the 715 students that we have this year. So we can see if we pay $25 an hour for that stipend, we're still looking at over $125,000. Once again, the purchase of the vehicles or a lease of some sort, and then once again, some of that could be reimbursed. We did identify a barrier here of staffing to find the folks. Many of our folks that hold that licensure in order to drive behind the wheel with students, they are already involved maybe in coaching positions after school where they have another extra duty contract. So this would all be done through an additional duty contract, an ADR. And option three, we could stop at that first line and keep allowing students to use the private companies. We did add an extra line here, and that is to look and investigate the possibility of providing some scholarships for those students that struggle to afford this. And we think it would approximately be $275 to $310 per scholarship. With that, we would have to develop some kind of method or a process as to how we would award those scholarships, an application piece. Would there need to be some proof of income or something to qualify for this? So that was just another option we put out there in addition to the ones that we gave earlier. Questions that you may have?
Okay, thanks so much for pulling all this together for us and providing some options and everything for us to consider. It's a lot to think about. School Board members, who wants to, who wants to start?
Okay, thank you so much for pulling this together. Two questions. The first one is, I know that there's a VDOE you said will provide some funding. I know that it doesn't include personnel, but do you have a rough idea of how much these divisions who are offering it get back from VDOE?
I don't have exact numbers, but what we do at the end of the year, if we offer behind the wheel, we have to go in and put in our expenses as to what we spent on the cars or the maintenance or the fuel, all those things. We put all of that in, and then they generate a number back to us as to how much we can charge per student and then our reimbursement. I don't know the exact numbers of that because it will depend on what we put in.
Okay, so it could cover one or two of the vehicles, like it could be a significant amount, or is it?
I don't know.
No idea?
We, we have no way of putting those numbers in because we have not offered this.
Okay.
But I could check on that and see. I don't think it's an actual percentage because it's based on what you spend.
Okay. And the second is, you said that the majority of divisions in the state do offer behind the wheel through the school division. Of the ones that, I don't know how deep you got into this, but of the ones that do offer it, do the majority offer it during the school day? Or do they do it on the, in the, after-school, on the weekends?
Mostly we're seeing after-school and weekends. Some of the counties that we checked in with, their prices range around $200, $225 per student is what they're charging as a school division. And most of them are offering. Floyd does offer and they charge approximately $225. Roanoke City, Roanoke County do not offer during, they don't offer it at all. They're like we are right now. Pulaski does offer and theirs is around 200, a little bit over $200 that they're charging their students. Giles, I did not get a response from, so I'm not sure what Giles County is doing.
And how's that compared to the private companies currently operating in Montgomery County? How much do they charge per student?
I have found private companies as low as a minimum seven hours, from $180-ish dollars up to 300, depending on which company you go with and how many hours you may need to be ready to go take that test.
Great. And then one final question. So one of the barriers that you do highlight is finding staffing if you do it after-school and on Saturdays. So in our division, there are socioeconomic differences and challenges in our division. Do you think, based on the research that you did, that, that option A of offering it during the school day would more likely service students across our division equally? If that makes sense, like of those two options, is there, does it make more sense to offer it during the school day because of the challenges, not only for our staffs, but also for our students as well?
For option one and two, when speaking with some principals, when talking about driver's education and behind the wheel, I had a variety of answers. I have students that are just not ready and they tell me, I don't want my license yet.
Right.
I have anxiety, I don't want to get on the road. So we have that kind of response. So it's going to vary by, that's an individual decision if a student wants to pursue getting that license. So that would probably be hard to tell without doing some type of survey of our students.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wondered. I wondered with maybe some of the surrounding counties, which model that they go with and have experience with and know which might work.
Most are doing before and after school or weekend.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Franklin? Give your mic for me. Thanks.
The online mandatory 90 minutes, well, not online, it's not online. I was wondering if it could be online for the student and the parent?
For the parent meeting?
That 90-minute mandatory training.
I am not aware that that is online. I think that is totally in-person right now. And I could not tell you if that was ever offered online during COVID or not. I could check into that, but I'm not sure. Right now, it is only offered in-person. And we do offer it at all four locations for the high schools.
Okay. So is this a training that's provided by who?
They have presenters that come in and do that.
From VDOT or from where?
I would have to check. Ms. Kelly Sudfin, our Health PE lead, organizes all of that through, they have a presentation that's, they get the same presentation at each location, so it's the same thing. So if you can't make one, you can go to one of the other locations and still get the credit for it.
So is it offered just one time or multiple times?
It's offered four times.
Four times? And you can go to any building?
You can go to any building that it's offered in, any of the four high schools.
Yeah, I would like to know if it's possible for it to be online.
I will check. I don't think it is, but I will check.
So that, and I agree that even though it is, was strongly recommended that school districts offer this, then the legislation, legislators, those people in Richmond need to pay for it, you know, or do a better job of subsidizing it because this can get very expensive, but it is something that would be very helpful to our community and our students. I remember paying for mine, my children, but I also remember not having to pay for it at all through the school system. It was in the summer, but you didn't have to pay anything. That's what I have.
Dr. Roundtree?
So of the other counties that you looked at, how many offer, or is there a decent portion that offers the program during the summertime rather than weekends and during, after-school?
They did not specify. They just, before, after-school or weekends. We were just trying to think outside of the box when there'd be more availability of student schedules and for our staff schedules. We were just trying to look at ways when we can find more time for people to be available because students playing sports, they may have after-school practices, which after-school would be difficult. Our secondary schools already start early of the morning, and so they might have to start very early in the morning driving. So we were trying to look at ways in which we could open up more possibilities for our students.
Yeah, I remember doing classroom and behind the wheel during the summertime when I was a kid. And so based on what you said about private companies, 180-ish to 300? and we would be charging something on the order of two hundred to two twenty-five, we're we're higher than that that low private company number. I also had a question about, is it possible for us to do a program like option two where it's done in the summertime? And maybe we're charging students, but we also have scholarships for those students that are uh that qualify for free and reduced lunches?
That would be the will of the board as to what you wanted to pursue with that. And then the only concern we have, number two, is the barrier of trying to find the staffing to cover that.
Are you, are we not concerned about staffing for all three options?
Option number one would be hiring brand new staff. That would be full-time employees, like three more driver's education teachers. That would be potentially people out there that are certified that wanted to teach drivers ed. As opposed to option two would be that stipend for existing people that we have within the division.
So option one, they would, it would be employees that would be teaching drivers ed the entire year, from the beginning of this school year to the end of the school year. That would that would be their their job.
Currently, we have health P E teachers that teach the health P E ten with drivers ed. And most of them have very full schedules. And it would be difficult to pull them during the day for option one to go and drive when they've already got a full schedule of health and P E.
Right. Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Prisow?
I don't, I don't think I have any questions right now, thank you so much for putting all this information together. Lot to think about.
Ms. Bond?
Okay, so I'm gonna be a negative Nancy, or excuse just expression. Yeah. I I could not support paying someone twenty-five or thirty dollars an hour. We've got people in the district raising families and paying for everything at sixteen dollars an hour and twenty dollars an hour. And we're lucky to get that, just the same conversation we just had about paraprofessionals making eleven ninety-seven as a substitute an hour. And this is a choice, I mean, I remember back in the day when we did it in the summertime too. But there was a reason we stopped, because it got so expensive. And and from what I always understood was the insurance and I I'm understanding that that's not a cost. But thi- this is a lot of money, this is a whole lot of money. And, you know, a lot of times, private companies will only have one or two cars. We're not, so they ha- they can keep their costs down a little bit opposed to us. We would have to have many more, and that's going to drive the cost up and the cost of the vehicles and and paying someone. And like you said, the benefits, this could run into an extremely lot of money. And when we're doing without other things to make the district work, when this is a choice. And don't don't get me wrong, I it was always it was tough to find and get in, but we, you know, having three students and grandchildren, we never had a problem finding a private company. And and none of my children's friends ever seemed to struggle with with doing it. So I don't mean to be presumptuous or judgmental by making that comment, but I I think that, I just think it's something that we don't need to look into till we can afford to do the other things in our district that we can, that we're not doing.
Ms. Bond, thank you for bringing up that eleven ninety-seven. I was just informed that it was really fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
So that was incorrect.
Even fifteen dollars an hour, that's ten dollars less. Still than what we would consider paying someone to teach our students how to drive on the road, which you couldn't pay me enough money, don't get me wrong. But it it's or or the same with our, you know, like I said, our maintenance folks and our our whether it's the guys who are out here mowing and keeping up our grass and keeping up our lawns, and a lot of those don't make twenty-five and thirty dollars an hour.
And Ms. Bond, we chose twenty-five dollars an hour as an arbitrary number.
That's not even guaranteed, you're gonna find somebody for that.
Because the driving company owner said he was paying twenty-seven or twenty-seven fifty and was having trouble finding people at that price. And then we just put in twenty-five and and you saw the numbers, it was over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That would just cover this year's students, that number could fluctuate year to year.
Yeah, I think we would be opening a can of worms and a bee's nest because if, you know, what might fit some during the day is not going to fit some. And when and, you know, you're gonna have parents, well, don't take my child out of school and I want them to get, you know, I don't want them to do after school, well, I can't do after school and it's not fair for them to get to do after school. I I think that we would be opening a can of worms by doing this, so.
Ms. Pardon?
So I'm gonna have to to agree with Ms. Bond. There's several things in this that I kind of have an issue with. I would love to be able to offer it because thirty years ago, when I took it at school, things were so much different than what they are now. Cost is a big factor for me. I'm I'm not really in favor of trying to put anything more into a school day. I feel like our students and our faculty and our teachers, you know, they are, according to what we kind of just heard, they kind of seem to be at their limit of what they're able to accomplish during their day, so I'd hate to put any more stress on them. Again, cost is a big factor for me. And since it was only about three or four years ago when my daughter went through behind the wheel with a very reputable company here, it would, it's going to be about the same cost as what we would be providing. So as far as really being a cost savings initiative, I don't know if someone's paying for it, depending on what we would have to charge, if it would really make that much of a difference. But I will tell you that if they do go with the private company, because the one you're talking about is my neighbor that does it, who is the health and P E teacher, they will come, they come and 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 like, they will come to the school. Like what we did was, she would she would have her training after school, but the company would come to the school and and they don't leave the school. They don't have to go meet them and they don't have to go, you know, do them. They come to the school, she and her friend got in the car, they did their, they did their time, they came back to the school and then they left the school. So, you know, having the private company kind of offers, you know, that they meet, they come to the student. So yeah, I don't know if I would, and not to mention that if for some reason, unfortunately, we might have to make some cuts to the budget. I would hate to start something and then us have to take it out of the budget because that's something to think about as well. So, thank you.
I guess for me, like, yeah, I have a hard time getting my head wrapped around how we would do this. I guess with option one, just just mechanically playing this out, like, could one, could two teachers at a high school provide seven hours of behind the wheel instruction for all those students in the in inside of a school year? Like that, like that math doesn't work in my head, yeah?
It would be very tight.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be very tight. And we went with higher minimum of three certified, so it could potentially be more.
And would that time be done during the normal driver's ed course or would that be interfering with other classes?
Ideally, it would be, but they're not going to be able to do everybody. And then they could potentially have to pull that student from another course, which is not ideal to be missing another class.
Yeah, I mean, just mechanically it hurts my head, right? And so if if then, if you're gonna try to do it in nights and weekends, which is when they're already having to do it already using the private courses, and then you're also gonna ask to pay the charge of them, but they're already being charged and the whole thing is kind of seems moot. Yeah, yeah, what are we doing? You know, yeah, thinking back to my high school days, you know, my my school, I pulled it up on Google just to see if they still have it, shout out to O'Enrico High School in Richmond. But they actually have a dedicated driver's ed course on their high school property. And they have a little fleet of cars, I see seven right now, you know, and they invested in that, right? So part of that in school, behind the wheel, is students driving that course during the day, right? So that they're they're getting a lot of that stuff. And then they also do like a like a road course exercise.
Road simulation.
Yeah, exactly right, but again, like that's a major investment, right? Like you've got that at every high school, you gotta have the dedicated space, the vehicles. Yeah, it's it's a major investment if you're gonna do this right and, you know, yeah.
And luckily, House Bill twenty-two thirteen strongly encouraged that it did not require.
That's how they like to get away without funding it. Strongly encourage it, but don't require it.
Right, right.
Can I ask you a couple more questions?
Yeah, of course.
So the private companies that that pay twenty-seven roughly an hour, do they also get benefits and are those full-time jobs? So the difference, so here, one of the options is for us to hire and that would include benefits. So the those employees who are doing those drivers trained, who are being twenty, paid twenty-seven dollars an hour, are they, is that a full-time job and they're getting benefits with that?
No, those are hourly employees that would work basically, like Ms. Parton was talking about, after school picking students up driving.
Right, right, so there there is a difference there between between the two. Someone who's making uh less per hour in their salary but have the benefits. The second is, so does Floyd, Pulaski, these are surrounding counties, do they provide it?
Floyd and Pulaski both do and it's before and after school.
Before and after school, so there are.
They're paying stipends.
And they use stipends? Okay.
Much like option two that we listed here.
Okay, I think my other question is, because I I I know that it can be a challenge to find to be able to make arrangements to get the driver's training behind the wheel with the private companies. Have you heard that, did you hear that as well when you were doing the research that 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 is a challenge? Because I've I know that it is, but I that might just be anecdotal.
I did not hear that, but we did not survey students. We were trying to get this together so we could get some information, some numbers and things back to you. I think that is something if we, if you wanted to pursue that as the board, we would have to really survey folks, parents or students to find that information.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it 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 is a lot of money. I I would be interested in surveying the community, our community to see, to get more information before doing anything, deciding one way or another. But I don't know if I'm alone on that, or if others might agree.
I guess, Board, just to kind of give some some next steps, I guess, do you want to continue to continue pursuing this, getting more information? Is there is an appetite for that or?
Add a brief clarity question real quick.
Yeah.
So the the numbers that you put here, those will be the total cost to the division. Does that include the revenue from charging students two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour?
No.
Or sorry, per class?
No.
Because that offsets all these costs by about a hundred and forty thousand. Well, no, the two the two hundred dollars is what the students pay.
In the other divisions.
In the other divisions, right.
Yes.
So I mean, if we just worked that out for seven hundred students, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that offsets this cost by a hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus whatever the the state's paying for it. So I mean, we, I think one thing we really need to understand is what is the what is the need in the community and how much additional revenue will this generate for the division that offsets this cost? Because this cost could be pretty close to net zero for us.
Well, the state won't let us charge more than what?
Not gonna spend two hundred dollars in gas on seven hours, but no, I didn't factor in gas.
We, it can't cover personnel, like a lot of this is personnel.
The.
Right.
The state portion doesn't cover personnel.
Student fee can cover.
It can, I believe, I will double check that. But the state would give us a cap based on our expenses of how much we could charge because no division is allowed to ever make a profit more than what you would spend. They have a cap they give you so you don't make a profit.
Just want to hit zero, not negative three.
Okay, so Board, so next steps, do we wanna, do we want to get more information? Do we want to poll the community and see if there's interest? Or have we seen enough? I guess, I'm sorry.
For me, as I believe you mentioned, there are a lot of students who don't want to drive now. They they just don't, it it blows my mind, I'm like, what? I mean, it's it's fifteen and eight months, I was at D M V getting my learner and I was waiting for my mother to get home when I could go get that license. Yeah, so it would be interesting to know just how many students would take advantage of it or could, because a lot of them just don't want to drive. Still don't understand it.
Where did this, the seven hundred number or seven, seven twenty-five or whatever it was? The number of students?
Seven hundred and fifteen students.
Did that come from the number of students in the classroom?
That came from our number of students currently enrolled in driver's education this year.
Is it safe to assume that all of those are planning on doing the wheel, behind the wheel driving?
You can take the course without without doing the driver, the the behind the wheel and you just do that when you're ready. Right, right. The classes. But you don't have to do behind the wheel, so you don't have to get your charge license, right?
And they can wait until they're eighteen and then and go get that license.
And some not even, you know, they can go to D M V without paying behind the court, I mean, they don't have to pay to take the course.
It may be true that there are students who who don't want to drive and don't want to pursue, but as somebody who worked through high school, I needed to drive. So I think that we have plenty of students in this county who actually need a driver's license because they have to work. So I would like to know, I would like some more information, I'd like to survey the community. But then I would also like to find out the actual cost for some of our surrounding counties that are offering it, how much that they're actually paying to provide this training to their students. I think that would be really helpful to know.
How much they're paid.
You know, how much that they're actually having to lay out. So find a comparable county that is getting reimbursed, that's charging students to say they're charging two hundred dollars. I'm assuming that's going to personnel because because they can get some of the reimbursement. I would like to know how much it would act, it's actually costing these counties because if seventy-two percent of the counties in the state are providing behind the wheel training, they've come to a different conclusion this than 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 we're coming to here, which is it's just too expensive. Well, lots of counties have decided that it's not too expensive and it's providing a service. So I think that we need, I feel like we need some more information before making a final decision.
All right, so let's get a, let's get a show of hands if how many on the board want to get more information, a survey, additional information from surrounding communities, so we can continue to pursue this. Yes, the survey would be, the survey would be the community, the students, you know, to to figure out if we have that need, right? And then a surrounding community is just to get more information about how they're doing it, right?
Sorry, an accurate estimate of revenue that we will be taking in that offsets these costs.
Right, because because I'm with you, I believe there's a need for some students because I had three other siblings I chauffeured around. But I want to know just because this seven hundred and fifteen may turn out to be three hundred. That's that's why I want to survey with the students.
All right.
Well, and I will share also, I may be wrong, correct me if I am, at this point, I know it. Um, at this point, I know at CHS, a lot of the students have to park down the road because there are so many driving that, um, there's not enough parking places. Yeah, so, it's not like students, I don't think, are not getting their license because of any certain reason or not. I, I think they are, um, because our parking lots prove that factor. They're full at all our schools with students driving. So, just with that and the caveat of finding out everything, it's, it's not like our students aren't getting, the ones that want to get their license, they're getting it.
All right, let me see hands again. Sorry, I didn't actually count. Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, great. Next up, um, Dr. Amanda Widener, Interim Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, will present data regarding K through twelve student enrollment numbers as of October first, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, School Board members, Dr. Graham. Uh, the Curriculum Instruction Department tracks our pupil membership, our student enrollment on a monthly basis. So, at the end of each month, uh, we pull data out of Power School, which is our student, um, database, um, so that we have information related to our enrollment. So, the spreadsheet that, that is presented to you is really just a point of information for you to be aware of our current pupil membership numbers. Um, if you look at that orange column that's highlighted, um, that shows our K-12 numbers as of September thirtieth. Um, those do not include our pre-K, which is indicated in the, the column to the left of it. Um, so, again, you can kind of see those numbers where we are. Where we were trending this time last year, which is the yellow columns to the far left, you can see that our pupil membership numbers are down. Um, in terms of how this may impact our funding, so, the state, um, our current funding is based on an estimate that was given to us by the state, um, earlier, I believe that was in May, and that number that they use for their estimate is nine thousand one hundred and fifteen, which is fairly close to what you see there. They will recalculate and finalize that number before the end of the school year, based on pupil membership on, they use a formula that, it's not a true average, but they look at a formula that, that includes data from October first, and then again on March thirty-first. So, they'll finalize that number, that funding that, uh, we currently have in place. Typically, we do tend to see our, our membership go up a little bit during the school year. You can see, for example, on, on these numbers, you know, we, we've bumped up a little bit since August. Um, but again, I just wanted you to have those numbers as a reference of information.
Great, thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
I just have a really quick one. Thank you so much for this information. So, I know that a demographic study was done for the county for the next five years, and, and there was gonna be a plateau. Do you know how this compares to the projection? Because it's, I think it's that, we received it last year, so it would have included the estimate for this year. Is this in line with that? Just, and I'm wondering because we're gonna be making decisions on, uh, and of, about renovations to building and capacity. Do you know?
I have not looked at that presentation recently, so I, I, I would wanna look at that data more closely to, to, to look at a comparison. I can say that this data reflects where, how we've been trending for the last four or five years. I mean, we, we've seen a decrease each year in, in our pupil membership and enrollment, so that, that trend is continuing. In terms of how closely that aligns to that demographic study, I would need to go back and review that.
Yeah, I'm really curious because it, it doesn't seem that out of line with, um, the projections from that. But that might be helpful just to look at. But this is great, thank you.
Board, other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about pre-K. So, two questions really. Uh, why is Prices Fork the only one that has, uh, pre-K three available? Or, students enrolled at least, maybe it is available at other schools, but not, nobody's enrolled.
We don't have pre-K programs at all, at all of our, pre-K three, um, third grade at all of our schools.
Is Prices Fork the only one that has it?
I thought Auburn Elementary also has it, but again, I'm.
Somebody else had it.
I thought we oughta edit it at Auburn Elementary, so I will double-check those numbers.
And my other question is, uh, are, what, what is the typical, well, a couple, the, what is the typical student-to-teacher ratio for pre-K four? Well, that's for kindergarten, I know. I didn't know if pre-K four was lower than kindergarten.
I can, I can get that information and, and bring it to you. I don't know that off the top of my head.
And then, the last question for that is, uh, Gilbert, Linkus, Harding and Kipps, is there one teacher servicing those twelve students total? Or, or, sorry, one teacher at each of those schools servicing five students, five students and two students? And if so, why is, why are those, uh, those classes under-prescribed?
Why is, what you're asking, like, why, why are those enrollment numbers as low as they are?
Right.
Okay. I can get some information and bring that back to you, uh, regarding our pre-K numbers and the staffing and whether or not we're utilizing those to fill capacity.
And are there requirements that people have to meet in order to be able to have a student in those cour, classes? Um, because I know that there's plenty of people in the community that are desperate for childcare, uh, in the, from, from birth all the way to kindergarten.
Mm-hmm. So, there are requirements. So, again, if, if that's more information you, you would like us to share, I, I can, I can bring that to the board, more information about, um, our pre-K numbers, requirements for student teach, student to pupil ratios, um, as well as, as well as, um, how many teachers we have staffed in those buildings.
And if they can, if you can draw from the other areas rather than just that area, i, if there aren't people that meet the requirements, I would think that there'd be more than two people that meet the requirements in the area. But, thank you.
Board, any other questions? Not really going around here, but we can if we want. See your finger, nope, go. Yeah, I guess, the only question I would have, and, you know, I don't know how much, how much analysis you've done prior years, but in terms of the decrease, is that, is that simply the result of fewer students coming in in the, in the pre-K kindergarten first grade level each year? And then therefore, you know, fewer people are coming in in order to offset the students that graduate? Or is it like some pattern of attrition kind of throughout the, of the different ye, years? Is there any, any real pattern there?
Uh, I would have to gather some more information and probably look back at that demographic study as to the reasons why the enrollment's declining.
Okay. Board, anything else? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And then our last business item tonight, uh, is the legislative priorities. So, on this one, you know, we put this content in executive content. Tosh, if you could maybe pull up a couple of the, of the files just for folks to see here, because we kind of just have a little bit of, it's a very rough draft, you know, some notes that we took from the, from our retreats. You know, some, some language that was added, um, to try to, try to flesh that out a little bit. I know individual board members kind of had some of their own thoughts, so, we didn't wanna put this out there and make it look any more, any more formal than it really is at this point, right? We just haven't had a chance to really discuss this as a board, so, um, I guess. Of the two files that we had in Board Docs, the first was just a straight-up list of notes that Tosh took from our board retreat. That was those initial eleven, and then there was a, a suggestion made by Dr. Roundtree at a, at a meeting, that was captured in there as well. And then, the drafts, uh, the draft priorities document was an attempt to try to, try to hang some meat around those items there and put it in more context. But again, this is our first time discussing it, so, really kind of open up the conversation with wherever anybody wants to go on this.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Before we do the round. So, is it typical that, uh, when putting together, and this, this for board members who've been around longer than I have, to put together this priority list, to have an extensive list? Or, does the board basically find a consensus around several items? And do some, because there's this, the list that we came up with, there are eleven items from, um, from the board retreat. That's a lot. Um, I'm not saying that they shouldn't all be priorities, but, uh, if I could have a little more context for how this works, that would be really helpful.
I can say for me as well, I, I don't know that I've been a part of this formally. I remember a discussion at a retreat a couple, a few years back, but it didn't really go anywhere, so I'd love some better context as well.
The Board of Supervisors has a fairly nice webpage with their priorities, and it's something on the order of half a dozen to a dozen priorities. So, we're maybe at the top of that ballpark number, but we're similar to what they're, they're doing. I think you maybe just counted it, actually.
I was just, I was just scrolling through it. I, I wasn't counting. But just in comparison, uh, Fairfax County has seventy-page document of their legislative priorities. So, I think it's, it's up to us. I don't think there's any. I think the, the Board of Supervisors in Montgomery County, it, it's very pleasing to the eye the way that they've arranged it. It's, um, kind of broad categories. A few of them have, um, specific code that they, that they point out, but not all of them. Um, that's a nice model. But I think we can do what we decide is right for us.
And just to follow up, and, thank you. Um, and so, we've, I've, I've got a couple of emails. So, you put together this list and then what happens to it? Like, is it part of a process of trying to lobby members of the General Assembly? Like, can you give me a little bit more context?
Ms. Franklin, can you kind of talk, talk through how this has been done?
Right, 'cause I, I outlined that when I raised the point about it. So, yeah, whatever we want as our legislative, uh, priorities, that's what we do. Typically, we have been tried, have tried to keep it, they used to say to one sheet, so you hand it to folks, they're gonna read it, 'cause they're not gonna go through seventy pages, they're not gonna go through three pages, quite frankly. So, the process is, we do it, we adopt it. November is take your legislator to lunch, right, which has not worked for several years now. Uh, there were times when we would take some people to breakfast and some people to lunch, and some people just, we never wanted to be engaged, which I always thought was, quite frankly, not efficient, because we need to be doing this in June and July. But here we are. So, with these priorities, in January, when legislators, Legislative Conference in Richmond for school board members, and they go to Capitol Hill and they lobby, set up appointments and go and present these again to our legislators, because we're gonna send them to them as soon as we get them. If, if somebody wants to come and sit down and talk to us about them, that's great. But we send them to them now, or as soon as we get them approved. And then, like I said, go to Richmond and lobby them in person to present them again and lobby them in person. So, that's the process.
And is it usually just a bullet point list of priorities, or does it go beyond that and actually make recommendations?
It's usually just a, a bullet point, uh, and that's when you're talking with them, that's when you give them more information as to the reasoning behind it. Sometimes they will ask for the data behind something, or whatever they might ask for, like we do, right? But I also think if the more information you can give them without overloading them, 'cause a lot of these they know already, right, 'cause everybody's asking the same thing. So, the format that was, my meeting went away, that was presented, to me, just is a little bit repetitive. You know, the board this, the board, and every line, the board this, right? Uh, that could make the document a little shorter. And it's, again, that one-on-one personal impact that might have the bigger impact, because it's a sheet of paper and, okay, thank you, right? So, that's how the process works. Is that what you wanted to hear?
Yeah, that, that's helpful, um, to, helpful context. So, um, can, we look first at the list from the retreat before looking at the, the language here? Okay.
So, for me, number two, funding SOQ positions. I thought that's what they were funding and not fully funding all our positions, because they tried to make people believe that they're fully funding public education and supporting our teachers, but they're only doing the SOQ positions and not all the employees that may be in, in the district.
Maybe that's just how the note was, was taken as a part of our discussion, but yeah, I agree. I think that's, I would say that's probably the goal behind that one.
The other document.
But it's, that's not what it says. It's just saying funding SOQ. It needs to say funding all positions.
So, in the second document, it says implement structural changes so the standards of quality reflect the real cost of public education. So, it's drawn out from that brief note to, I.
Right.
And if you want to say that a better, a better way.
As long as what we're saying reflects funding all employees.
I guess there probably is value, maybe this is where Dr. Gettrud was going, you know, since this is the first time we've seen this list since our retreat, just to make sure that there's board, board concurrence, that these are our priorities. Everything else becomes a, a wording exercise after that, so.
Yeah. One of the questions that I have, for instance, was more funding for RNs in schools. Is that a General Assembly level decision? Like, who makes that decision?
They do. They have to allow us.
To do what? To?
To be able to have taxing authority.
Uh, sorry, the, the one more funding for RNs in schools.
Oh, RNs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Like, is that a, is that a General Assembly level, or is that an MCPS level decision? That's one of the questions, I don't know.
That's our decision. Now, to have more, but for them to fund it, that's our, that's what we're asking. You all should be funding this. Correct? 'Cause they don't give us anything for it now.
I mean, I think really, like, you could say all of these is, these are all, I mean, in a lot of cases, these are things that we are already funding. We're asking for help, right? You know? Yeah, 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 right. I mean, the special ed funding, we're doing that. We want more support with, uh, pre-K or BAM or that. Childcare, health services, right? We're asking for, for more state-level support, so we're not having to fund so much of that out of our own budgets, right? So, I guess maybe just kind of, kind of walk down the list just to, you know, are we all in favor of pushing for vaping and THC regulations? Any concerns there?
To me, that needs to be bigger. That needs to be just drugs, period, pushing for vape.
Pushing for vaping, THC, THC and drug regulations. I, I think we're leaving out one of the biggest things. I mean, I, I definitely support that, but I think it needs to be bigger than that.
Well, I think one of the reasons that the vaping and THC regulations may be on there, at least in my mind, was that I know that the General Assembly has created the committee that is, that, that is working on making recommendations for tightening regulations in that area. So that's an active, ongoing initiative through the General Assembly that makes sense to support. And that's not to disagree with the, the wider needs.
I understand, but it seems in my years of experience and watching, one thing moves to another. And we forget what was on the forefront before. And I'm just saying, that keeps it on the forefront, because it's still there, and it's still a problem. It's just vaping and THC are what's on the horizon as in front. And I, I, we, I just, for me, I don't want to see what's still there underlying.
Well, I'm telling you, what needs to be there is fentanyl, so.
Absolutely. The big stuff.
That's the number one. So I, I think we at least need to add fentanyl to that list, to the vaping and THC.
So state code already has illicit illegal drugs regulated well. I actually provided some documents to, to some school board members about, or some draft legislation that takes the current legislation and adds to it THC and vaping regulations specifically. So there, there is already a lot of regulations around drugs and alcohol and tobacco. Vaping and THC have really fallen through the crack of the, of the state regulations. And the state regulations need to be patched to include those two topic items. Which is why there's, we're seeing so much trouble with it, is that there's, it's slipping through the cracks that are in, that are legally, the legal cracks that are available for it to slip through.
True.
Okay, so I think that on item two there, I think we're all in agreement there about, about fully funding positions, SOQ and, and beyond, with the full cost of, of the teaching positions there.
So if you could help me on the SOQ position, so I know, for instance, if there's a mandate for a, a cost of living increase, that it's for SOQ positions. So one of the things that we run into is that we have to, we offer those increases for non-SOQ positions. Right? So is that a specific item, way of addressing the gap between the actual costs and what they're funding? Is that if there is any mandated increase, that it would not only, the state would supply that not only for the SOQ positions, but also for the non-SOQ positions?
So, some of that is actually that the J-Lark study suggested that some of those non-SOQ positions should really be SOQ positions. That they are not funding an appropriate number of teachers for the number of kids in the school systems.
Yeah.
They're putting that on the counties.
Yeah, so I think some specific languages that addresses a couple of those issues, because I, I agree that it's not fully funding, but I remember that as well from the J-Lark study, so I think maybe refining funding SOQ positions might be beneficial.
You can kind of solve that, you know, one of two ways, right? Like broaden, broaden the number of SOQ positions being funded, right? Or fund SOQ and everything else, right? However you want to do it, right?
They need to fund everything else.
Right.
Yeah, this is what it takes to employ all of our employees, because we always try to make it fair, not just those SOQ positions. And that's a burden on the community.
I'm having out number three of the lunch and breakfast.
Yeah, I'm behind that one. I'll be pushing for it locally, too.
Shocker. Anti-vouchers?
Should be private and religious.
Any non-public options? Like, I, if you choose to homeschool, that's a choice, but that doesn't maybe mean that parents get a stipend from the state to teach their kids.
That'll work for me.
Tosh, I should have asked. Are you taking notes for us? Thank you. A little late now for me to ask that. I'm having assistance with capital funding, just.
Pretty straightforward.
No-brainer.
Yeah, right there with the J-Lark study, too.
Yep. Special education. Again, no-brainer. Expanding pre-K.
I have a question about, what's the difference between seven and eight?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that one next, yeah, right.
It seems that the, the crisis for childcare is that pre-K.
So the expanding pre-K is getting education for three- and four-year-olds across, well, it depends on who's talking maybe, but me personally, across the board, universal education for three- and four-year-olds. But, universal public education for three- and four-year-olds. Lack of childcare, we also have a predominantly female population of employees in our school system. And all too often, the burden of childcare at early ages falls on females and families. Being able to provide childcare somehow through our systems to our employees will benefit us in keeping those employees or getting them back after childbirth quicker.
For me, it should be the lack of, the lack of childcare, is that there's a lack of childcare in this country, period. And, and they need to, the legislators need to step up and recognize that. That has an impact on the whole state, not just school systems.
Well, and for me, once again, this is the very one thing I have fussed about with all the additional spring breaks and things like that, because our community has a lack of childcare. So to look out for just one area is completely unfair when it comes to everybody. So I under, I can support expanding pre-K, but having and providing taxpayers, when they're struggling to find daycare and, and childcare themselves, I, I can't, I can't support that.
You can, you can have it across everyone. You don't have to have it just for our- It's, I pointed out that our staff is, has that burden more likely than other general.
No.
I don't agree. As I, no, I, no. As I have somebody out, it's been for three months, no, because of that, no. No, that, it's everybody.
It's everybody, and the burden generally falls to females and families. And our employees are having a much higher percentage of female employees than many other job sectors in the community. There are other job sectors that have similar percentages of female employees.
Well, we can ask the General Assembly, just in jet, to say, hey, additional childcare options for parents and caregivers would be a wonderful thing for you to do. That doesn't mean that the burden is falling on MCPS. We're just saying, as a school board, we recognize this as a problem in our division. It affects our families and our community. There you go.
I can't. I, I can't do that.
Not just for our staff, but there are benefits to our program because of the makeup of our staff.
I mean, the intention, as I'm reading that, the intention, like, the way you tie this into a school board-related, a list of priorities, is because of the impact it has on our staff, right? It's a, it's a broader problem than just our school division. But you, you, you solve it by providing better childcare options to the community at large, period. And that benefits everyone, including the school division, right? Like, we're asking for stuff that matters to us, not just everything we want to see right in the world. Right?
When it comes to childcare, yeah, in the world, yeah.
Well, so, I mean, we could ask for world peace on here, too, right? I mean, we're trying to tie this into something that, that, that matters to us.
Right.
And the lack of childcare, uh, is an, is, it impacts our staff, among other people.
Sure, understanding that, but if it's done through that, taxpayers are who's assuming those, these legislative priorities. So, you know, that's, if, if we're just asking for, oh, well, we want to make sure we've got childcare provided for our schools, for our staff.
That's not what anybody's saying.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I just have, I want to make sure that that's not what it's saying on there. I can't support it if it just says that. If it says we need more childcare as a general rule for our community, absolutely. But just for our staff, no, I can't, I can't support that.
If you look at the notional language over in the, in the, the draft priorities, it was, it's a broad statement about, you know, additional childcare options for parents and caregivers, period.
Yeah, and connecting it to why it's important for our workforce is where I was getting.
Right.
Because it is important for our workforce. We have trouble finding teachers. And part of that, this is part of that reason. There's a lot of, there's a lot of other industries that have trouble finding employees for the same reason.
Absolutely.
And we can provide it for everybody. They can provide it for everybody. We're just making the argument as to why it's important to school districts.
It's important to everybody, because our families, you know, one of the biggest issues when we start talking about spring break and teacher workdays, is the lack of childcare in the community, not just in the school system.
Thank you.
No one's arguing with that. I don't understand why we're wasting time arguing about some of this not being argued.
You don't have to connect it. This is a universal thing. We just need to say it.
Cool. So we're two minutes away from having to take our, our extension vote, just FYI. But this is the last business agenda item we got, so we just need to get through this.
We're one minute away, and we're not finishing in thirty minutes.
That's, I was gonna say, Chair Hudson, I would say that we table this, and because this could keep us here another hour with the conversation, and we're only at eight. So I would say that we table it.
You know, so.
I would ask if we could at least get through this list.
Yes.
And then work on language separately, but like, we gotta know what, what we're heading towards, and I don't think that's gonna take half an hour.
Because this should, technically should have been done a while ago, because November is when this really should be pushed out. And our next meeting is not until November.
So let's go ahead and do our, it's eleven o'clock, cool. Good timing. Can I get a vote to extend in order to, in order to complete our review of this priority list? And then everything else will be, will be offline in order to, to work on the language, and then to get through our other unfinished business, new business stuff.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion?
Yes, let me make sure I understand you. So instead of going through this number by number, you just said approve the rest of the list, correct?
No, I just wanna, I just want us to, to finish discussing these, these items on here.
Just wanted, that's why I asked, so, bye.
I just wanted to make sure that if these, I, I just want the board to weigh in on whether we want these to be the items on our list.
Okay, if we can do that without going into deep discussion on each one of them, and just say, yes, we want this, or no, we don't. But it, everything goes into an extreme discussion, so what's, are we gonna agree to do that?
Can we also let staff go?
Yeah, we can get, we can get done quick. Could we have a motion in a second? Ms. Osborne, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Four in favor, two opposed, one abstaining.
Motion carries? Okay. Mental health services. So additional investment at the state level in mental health service support.
I think we just heard from our community that there's a big interest.
Right. Okay. More funding for our registered nurses in our schools. This was, this was a question Dr. Gitcher asked earlier.
Did you ask for this item, Dana, or Ms. Parton?
So I, I think it was in discussion when we were talking about the certified people, and the, I think we were having some trouble with nurses at one time. And so I thought that we, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see more funding for the RNs. And from what I've heard from some others that have talked to us about the issues that they're having with the nurses, especially if one's out, I'm not sure where our problem lies with that, if it's actually the pay, or if it's, we just can't find them to apply. But whatever we can do to entice, to entice that, to get more nurses and help into our school on that specific item, I'd be all in favor of. And yes, Dr. Roundtree, I did bring that up.
What's the status of state funding for RNs? Do they fund any?
No.
Do they fund any nursing, nurses at schools?
No. So Mr. Hudson and I last, at the last VSBA conference, attended a workshop that was pushing for all school districts to have RNs as their nurses, because of their ability to do so much more. So if it's funding for RNs in schools, not more funding, because they don't give us anything anyway.
Right. Do I get head nods on that one? Good, good. Okay, great, thanks. Number eleven, that was retired SSO, so that obviously kind of fell out of our conversation to that point about. Remind me.
So thi, this is actually, I think we originally had ten, and I brought up the retired SSO one in a later meeting. And this is legislation to move the SSO program from education into law enforcement, so that school security officers can be supported, and that they would be law enforcement individuals, not employees of a school district.
If I understand how this works, it's the retirement that they would lose if they are working for a law enforcement agency. So just allow them to get their retirement.
Right.
It does have some other stipulations there. They would only, i- if it was a law enforcement SSO person, they would only be able to do the school SSO program. They wouldn't also be able to do other things in the, the law enforcement. Whereas currently, our SROs do have jobs that they, they do other things in the, in their appropriate law enforcement agency.
Do we have support for that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, great. All right, great. So, then the last one, this was definitely one that was kind of suggested after the fact, but the, the school board taxing authority.
Yeah, so, uh, our Board of Supervisors recently had some discussions about potential for a shared revenue program where the school board and the Board of Supervisors would come to an agreement and a percentage of revenue, total revenue, the state revenue, federal revenue that comes, everything to the county would be split on some percentage basis. And if the, the revenue from state and federal for schools went up and other revenue was lacking, then we would just get other portions of that revenue. Get the total funding split. Um, the synopsis of the discussion, as I understand, is there wasn't a whole lot of support for it on the Board of Supervisors' level. And there was discussions and comments made about how it didn't give them ability to modify the budget if they had expenses that they needed to take care of. And by that, they mean take money from the largest pot that they have for some other program that they want to take care of. Now, I understand that, like, it is, it, it must be nice to be able to, to say, we, uh, we need money to do something. Just not provide the increase of revenue to the school that is appropriate for the split between the two agencies. And if they want more money, we'll blame them for raising taxes. And that's, that's the story under, no matter what political party is in authority. This gets, gets away with that, or it, it just gets rid of it. We have a commissioner of revenue, they collect revenue, we tell them our tax rate. If people are upset with us providing the services as a school board for the tax rate that we set, they vote us out. And I think that that's a, everybody should be on board with that. The, the Board of Supervisors, the school board, both sides should be, but they don't want to be because they always want, we need a million dollars, we'll get it from the schools.
Other states do allow the school boards to be taxing authorities, and it would require changing the constitution of Virginia to provide that. So, it would be a heavy lift, I think. I don't know if we have consensus on the board to add it to our priorities. It, it might not be the one that happens in the General Assembly next year, just being the pessimist that I am.
It's a long haul lift. It's not gonna hap- probably not gonna happen next year, but we gotta start at some point.
This has been out there for a long while, but because folks know it's not gonna happen, they put their resources in trying to push for other things. When I first came on the board and I was hearing about taxing authority, I was like, nope, want no parts of it, right? But in the environment that we live in now and what the supervisors did to us this year with our budget, which was despicable, um, there's got to be some kind of safeguard for us to be able to fund schools and not have a budget that's, you're gonna get this and then you do everything you're going to do, approve your budget, tell people how much they're gonna be paid, and then have it yanked out from underneath you, and then you go back and figure out something else. Something has to happen with that because I heard loud and clear from at least two of those board members that this president, precedent was set and did not seem like it wasn't something they weren't gonna be using. So, we can expect this kind of nonsense to keep going on every time they don't like something that we do. And that's not what their job is. Their job is to give the funding and that's it. Not to yank things back when they don't like what we do or not fund you at all because they don't like what we do. That has to stop. And if this is a means to an end, within reason.
More thoughts on this one? Haven't heard anything from my, from my left over here.
Sure, there's opinions over here, don't you know?
Respectfully, respectfully, uh, respect my board members and their opinions and everything they've said, but I would not personally be able to support that.
I'm fine leaving it on to send a message, if nothing else, to the Board of Supervisors. I saw that presentation, I knew that was never gonna fly. I was not surprised at all at their response to the proposal.
I guess, this one's a little more divisive than others. Let me see, a show of hands of who wants to include this one on the list. I mean, I'm, I'm coming off the board, but I'll tell you, as a board member, if, like, if you talk to your Board of Supervisors representative and hear horror stories about people coming up to them in the grocery store, how dare you raise my taxes, right? I would not want that as a part of my job. I wouldn't want that for you, but if the majority of this board wants that to be a part of their message, then.
I'm clear. It's dangerous. A funding body who doesn't care what you think about running the schools that you were elected to help manage and say, we're just not gonna fund it and, and don't want to work with you or even have a conversation beforehand about this is the need. And this whole thing about there was a lack of communication with understanding, I'm sorry, that was BS.
Or the claim that letting people know the implications of tax revenues and people coming out and talking to them about it is somehow, won't repeat the statement of the Board of Supervisor member the other day, but, uh, a threatening issue for them. They are elected officials. If they can't be held accountable, if they can't read what their congregants write to them and respect their opinion and try to work with what their voters put them in office to do, maybe they don't belong there.
So, the good news is, I guess, if there's good news, is that the list that we started with, well, I, I actually guess I should ask, are there any other priorities that people feel strongly about that isn't in front of us right now and that isn't already among these twelve?
So, my read on these priorities is that they are for the, the state and/or federal level, but maybe primarily at the state level. And I was just wondering if there was any value to having something at the, at the local level. I'm personally disappointed that neither town nor the county enacted the, developed an ordinance based on the legislation from the General Assembly in 2024 that limited vape shops within a one thousand mile radius, a one thousand foot radius of schools, daycares and, and private schools. Roanoke County did that in November of 2024. And we have had nothing, and I have had several personal conversations with members of all three of those bodies, and they have done nothing.
And there's at least one facility that has gone in, that is now going to be grandfathered in, that would not have been able to go in, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Uh, certainly in Blacksburg, there's one within a radius of a daycare center, at least one. It's hard to keep up.
Maybe we need to get that, uh, that social media ammunition back out.
Just don't, just don't leave any voicemails. Okay, so, the thought I was gonna make, so, the good news is, is the twelve that we started with are the same twelve we have, which is the twelve that drove the development of the draft that we have. So, I guess I'd ask board members next to review the, the draft and provide some, some feedback on it, kind of offline, um, so we can, uh, get that in shape. Okay? All right. Anything else on this one? All right, all right. That brings us up to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business? Um, I actually have one myself, um, so, and I should have asked this back when BWP was here, but, but they made a statement that I just wanted to get the board's feedback on. So, in terms of, of the, the booklet here with all the feedback, um, this is, is to be a public document, and, and they mentioned putting it on our website, Tash said that she could put it in Board Docs. Guess my question to the board is, do we want to do that immediately or do we want to take a few minutes and actually read through this thing before we, we make it public since we are just getting it tonight?
I mean, for me, it is what it is. This is what our community said, and what are we gonna adjust? We shouldn't be adjusting anything.
Yeah, I, I just didn't want to assume because there was, there, there's assumptions being made that we hadn't discussed.
Yeah, the, uh, the appendix is the only thing that I saw as I was looking through quickly, albeit, that is largely not included in the, the slide deck that they showed today, today. Um, and it's, it's all good quality information. I mean.
Again, the whole point of why he didn't want to make it, share it in advance was so board members have a chance to review it before you got questions from the public. You still gonna have a chance to review it if it gets released tonight.
That was his excuse for not getting it to us in a timely manner.
Okay.
But that doesn't, yeah, not sharing it doesn't give the public a timely manner to review it either. I mean, yeah, there might be some people that are gonna, if we post it tonight, gonna stay up till seven o'clock in the morning, and they're gonna read the whole thing before I get to read the pages that I haven't read yet. But, yeah, who? I don't know, or somebody.
I'm fine releasing it.
Okay, okay, great. I just wanted to ask the question, I don't wanna, didn't wanna make any assumptions. All right, any other items of unfinished business? Any items of new business?
So.
Yes.
I just have a, a quick question. So, I, if I'm, memory serves me, that we were supposed to get a presentation on the Grade Point issue in October. Um, is, is that coming up soon in November? November eleventh? Okay, great, thank you.
I think that was just a, push it back just because of everything else we had on the agenda, but yeah.
Okay, well, with the lateness of the hour, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but since everybody wants to stay late, let's go for it. Um, I, I know that we have a dress code policy, but it is definitely not being adhered to in our schools, and Ms. Parton has talked about it for years. And I'm just listening to our parents, that the shirts are getting shorter, the shorts are getting shorter, the sleeves are getting shorter, the fronts are getting lower, and, um, from what I understand, I, I get it. They, you know, we can't call fifty parents every day to come get their children, but things are looking pretty bad in our schools, and.
I can connect with your principles, we can.
Yeah, and, um, so, if we need to send something home stating, hey, parents, you know, if your sons and daughters aren't dressed appropriately, we're gonna call ya. And, you know, just, just to communicate that, um, of what our, our policy already is in, we already have it. So, we need to, I mean, even at the games, things are looking pretty bad. So, you know, when I see shorts up the honey and, and I was there, I'm there and I see it. So, um, you know, it, it's, it's just, I think we need to make sure we're a school, we're a school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, any other items of new bu- of new business? Was there a second one that I heard? No. Okay. All right. Any announcements?
I do want to say, I think the track at Eastmont is ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine-nine percent finished. Am I right in saying that? It looks phenomenal. I got to see it at the homecoming game Thursday night, um, when I went to the, um, and then the parade was Monday and the pa- so, I actually, uh, actually saw it Monday because I, I peeked over when I went to the homecoming parade. But Thursday night, um, I actually got to see it up close, and it is absolutely gorgeous. So, if you guys are down the mountain and, or you're bored and you just want to go take a look at it, it's something to be very proud of. Um, I'm so glad it's finally done after years of pushing and begging and pleading. Um, those students have a beautiful track. So, thank you to everybody involved with that. It's, it looks amazing.
Great, anything else?
Yeah, just congratulations to our students and staff on successful completion of the first nine weeks of class. And reminder that there is breakfast for all students at no cost to students at all of our schools, and, uh, you can take advantage of that. Hopefully, we will be able to extend that to, uh, to lunch programs, and hopefully it will be with state funding for both next year. It'll be through county fundings.
I just want to thank, uh, Dr. Megan Holly for giving me a little tour of Beeks Elementary. Uh, I think it was last week. Um, I'd been in the school just briefly as, when, when my kids have had things there, but I hadn't, um, seen the entire school in the way that, um, that she showed me, and it really hit home some of the, the facility needs of these older schools in Blacksburg. They are significant and should not be understated. If you have not seen, you know, major upgrades to that school, please understand, and you haven't been there in a while, it, it looks like it needs it. Uh, and to go back, I guess maybe this is old business, um, you know, when we approved the, the funding for the, the playground equipment there, they have a, a slide that's been boarded up since before COVID. They have other playground equipment that's taped off because it's not safe, as well as a very steep hill down to some of their play equipment that, um, isn't accessible for every kid. So, um, eighty thousand dollars for playground equipment may seem like a lot, but it's really not even enough.
Board, any other announcements? All right, great. Upcoming school board meetings, our next, um, regularly scheduled meeting is on November eleventh. Um, but as we discussed earlier, Tash has already sent out a, a, an email, um, asking for available dates. We'll need a special session next week for some student matters and to. asking for available dates. We'll need a special session next week for some student matters and to finalize that superintendent, um, profile, so. Okay. And with that, I adjourn this meeting at eleven twenty-six PM.